This is great. I think we need to have it on Valentine's Day every year because we have a full board today. That's exciting. So the February fourteenth regular meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order. Secretary Burford, please proceed with the roll call and housekeeping announcements. Trustees, please respond when the secretary says your name.
Anna Cavanado.
Present.
Christine Cronin. Gary George. Chuck Hoffman. Aaron Lair. Tamara Mabbett.
Present.
Cheryl Martin.
Present.
George Mendoza.
Present.
Cedric Reel.
Present.
Kelly Ryan.
Here.
Deidre Schreiber.
Present.
Brenda Smith. Brad Stevens.
Present.
Carrie Thompson.
Here.
Mauricio Valerio.
Present.
Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Yes, so our brief housekeeping announcements, we ask everyone to please put your cell phones on do not disturb. Members of the media, if you have not already done so, please sign the sign in sheet at the recorder's desk to my left. And likewise, anyone present in person who wishes to give a public comment, please be sure to sign the sign in sheet at the recorder's desk. To provide access to the public, the public have been invited to attend in person, and this meeting is being live streamed over the Internet. Speakers must use the tabletop microphones, which are the only way that people on the live stream can hear what we say. Also, please make sure the mic is within four inches or so of your mouth, as using the mics is also necessary for proper amplification within this room. If more than four mics are on at a time, however, they stop working. So please turn your mic off when you aren't using it. If you have a laptop or other device, please make sure the speakers and microphone are turned off. And if you're joining us remotely, please keep yourself muted unless speaking. Trustees at your places, you'll find the meeting agenda and travel reimbursement forms. Please sign the travel form and turn it into Angie by the end of the meeting. And the board received no written public comments for this meeting. We also did not receive requests for remote oral public comment. However, three people have submitted notice that they intend to give public comment today, and we'll address that a little later in the agenda. We may have other people sign up for comment prior to the start of the public comment period. That concludes my housekeeping announcements.
Thank you, Secretary Burford. We'll begin with President Ryan giving her remarks, please.
Thank you. I'm delighted to see everyone again, and thank you, as always, for your service to the university. There is so much to report, and I'm hopeful you got a chance to review some of the amazing items we sent you last week about the happenings on campus. I'd like to highlight six or maybe seven, depending on how you count, important items that we've undertaken over the last couple of months. First, we've established our university-wide strategy teams made up of faculty, staff, and students to deliver us collaboratively-developed plans to reach our goals outlined in the Ascent 2029 strategic plan. The teams are divided into four major areas: student success, enrollment growth, campus welfare and community engagement, and finally, long-term financial sustainability. Each of these four major themes have been mapped to specific portions of the strategic plan. The teams are charged with researching best practices both at EOU and other institutions, and collaborating with campus to drive discussions about best practices. Ultimately, they'll be delivering three to five big ideas to move EOU forward. These ideas will then be discussed and vetted among campus leadership and become part of our strategic focus and plan for the future. Second, we've been diligently working on bringing our spending in line with our revenue. We'll need just about 9.32% reductions for the long-term health and financial sustainability of EOU. We've established a collaborative process driven by best practices in higher education. We've asked for campus-wide input. We're making use of shared governance and budget manager input. The process informs cabinet and presidential decisions about the budget. We've asked managers to assess the impact of their proposed reductions on student success, mission fulfillment, and other key indicators. Those are due to cabinet at the end of this very week, and we can now work on addressing that budgetary shortfall. Fiscal sustainability ultimately means we are preserving access to higher education. That's why I care about it. We're undertaking this difficult work so that we don't price students out of educational opportunity. Balancing our budget is the very best way to preserve access, even as it is extremely difficult work. Of course, I do feel it's important to remind everyone, we are not currently in a crisis. We must do the work now to right the ship before we get to a crisis in order to best serve our students, faculty, staff, and community. Third, simultaneous efforts are ongoing to establish new revenue streams and enhance our enrollment pipeline, even with threats of declining demographics and lower college-going rates. We're building a culture and a practice of student success on campus with programs that you've heard about already. We have four campus-wide strategy teams that I just mentioned. And of course, we have admissions work on building deep relationships with our local rural high school communities, increasing Latino and American Indian engagement, and remaining focused on adult learners, which EOU has served well for several generations. We're committed to maintaining that focus. We also have, of course, enhanced outdoor marketing, student-driven earned and paid media, and increased social media engagement. In addition to that, we're working on creating some community-responsive academic programming by meeting with local leaders to find out about their needs. Since we're talking about enrollment, I wanted to give you a small update on our winter enrollment, and this counts as 3B among my items. Our headcount grew 1.7% from winter 2023, and it's the highest headcount we've had since winter 2017 with 386 students. Our credit hours, which are the driver of the budget, are up 2.7% since last year, and that's the highest since 2021. The major driver of our credit hours and headcount are better retention numbers, and it's important for us to understand this involves a large campus-wide engagement. Our on-campus retention of new first-year students was 92.4%. That's the highest since winter 2020. Online, we reached 77%. That's only 18 students, so, you know, don't freak out. We've talked about the difference between online and on-campus learners before. Our new transfers are looking really great, too. We managed to retain 94.2% from fall. That's the highest since winter 2018. And online, 82.4% of our transfers were retained. This is great work. This is a campus-wide commitment, and it involves each and every one of us. My fourth item is I just wanted to share, progress continues on the search for EOU's next provost and vice president of Student Affairs. We're working with search firms on those. We will be doing a search for the VPFA later this year. That search isn't as beholden to the academic calendar. Fifth, Chair Martin and I, when we were thinking about this board meeting, we really wanted to focus on students, their need for support, to have an engaging campus, as well as a challenging and encouraging academic environment. Tonight, we're going to greet many of our students at a reception, and I hope you'll get a chance to talk with as many as you can. They'll be coming direct from a practice or class, so they'll be wearing their everyday clothes, but I do hope you'll take a moment to maybe talk with at least three or four of them. And I'm hopeful that together, after meeting with them and learning about them, and all the things we'll learn over these next two days, we really can chart a bright future for EOU. Six, I wanted to say happy Valentine's Day, and a special thank you to Lori Baird and Angie Adams for the chocolates, which I've already eaten. I woke up with a desperate need for chocolate. You fulfilled it. I'm very grateful. Again, I just want to thank you for your dedication. Chair Martin?
Thank you, President Ryan. I'm going to, it's my turn to say a few remarks, and because my father just passed away, I was going to just mention that. But before I do that, I would like to introduce you to Dakota Weston. She is a senior at North Powder High School, and she's finishing up her mentorship program and thought she wanted to mentor me. I said it might be difficult and not necessarily a positive experience, but we welcome her, and we're happy that she's here. So, welcome, Dakota. So I wanted to thank you all for your kind words, thoughts, and prayers. My dad was a strong, loving, and wonderful man. He taught us all about unconditional love. He taught us godly values, morals, ethics, wisdom, a deep appreciation of nature, hard work, and faith. We miss him greatly. I wanted to share a little anecdote with you. Many, many years ago, when I was a student here at EOU, Dr. Lozo was my writing professor. And I remember an assignment that she gave us. She had several topics that we could choose from, and the one I picked was he was a man of steel and velvet. Well, of course, I wrote about my father, because that's how I felt about him. He was tender and loving and kind, but he was also very strong and worked hard on the ranch and spent his lifetime working hard and raising children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren. And so I was thinking about that when I was going to mention him. I thought, you know, Dr. Lozo picked that. And I got some high remarks from her on it, which was unusual. She was a very strict grader. But she did really appreciate the paper about my father. So, anyway, and as President Ryan said, this is a student-focused meeting this time. It should be every time, but we're kind of specifically picking some things with our students. I feel like one of my main responsibilities as board chair is to make sure that our meetings are valuable for you, and that you all, as board members, feel like it is a good use of your time and that you're contributing to EOU University, Eastern Oregon University. And I hope we do that. So throughout this meeting, and I meant to get a little heart piece of paper in front of you to write on, but if you could kind of think of the things that you feel we do during the meeting that are valuable to EOU and to our administration and our faculty here on campus. I also sent out a video that President Ryan had sent me that I thought was great on the value of regional universities, and I hope that you had a chance to look at that. Then we also, she sent out an article that also talked about the value of regional universities. I thought those were really, really hit the nail on the head as far as Eastern Oregon University is concerned. And so maybe at some point in the meeting, we're kind of watching the time, but I'd like to have a few minutes to discuss that and your thoughts and comments in regard to that. So we will see how the time goes, and if time allows, I would love to hear your thoughts regarding those. So with that, those are my comments, and I am opening it up now to trustee comments, and I'll start with trustee Cavanado. She had shared with me a trip that they took over to LaGrande High School. EOU has a presence there, and she was excited about it, and I wanted her to share some of her thoughts.
Yes, this was maybe a couple of months ago or so. Kathleen Brown, who heads the college initiatives office, she asked me to visit this room, then now EOU as the high school. And I wasn't really, I didn't know really what to expect, but I asked my students in the chemistry club. A couple of them came along, some baked cookies to connect the chemistry to cookies and food and whatnot and other things. Anyway, the point being was that I was so pleasantly surprised that I didn't know that that room was there, and it's in a very, it's in an excellent position, because it's where all the students, you know, they have to walk by. So the room is full of, you know, EOU, what would you call it, banners and things like that. And anyway, whether it was the cookies or the chemistry or the location of the place, we probably got like 30-some students to stop by. It was amazing, and it was just a really great. So I don't know whether there are some people in this room that are responsible for that. I'm looking at you. But anyway, whatever it was, I think it's a great idea. I mean, just that visibility for the students to drop in, ask questions. EOU faculty are being highlighted there. I think it's a easy thing to do, but yet I think very effective. So I'm very grateful to have been part of that experience.
Thank you. I bet it was exciting to see students come in there, and we can advertise that way. Other comments from trustees? Yes, trustee Reel.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that this year, it was a lot of fun. We had our lobby day this last week. There was over 30 students from EOU representing, which I thought was really cool to see. I think last year, we had eight or nine, maybe a little more, but we fit on a small van. This time, we had a bus going up, and a lot of students drove themselves. There was a lot of support, and I don't know the exact numbers, but some of the bigger schools that were there had far fewer than we had. So there's really good EOU representation, and I just wanted to make note of that. It was a lot of fun, some good lobbying, some good conversations.
Very cool. That's such a great experience for you guys. Great. Other comments from trustees?
I'll make one real quick, and it's more on the athletic side. I don't know how often you do the, whether it's your meet and greet, or whether it's the folks that donate to the athletic fund are able to go to the upstairs section where there's the games taking place, and it's halftime, and then there's food and beverages. But whenever you do, like, I'll just say the beverages, and a lot of people come up, it makes it like a really cool environment to watch a sporting event and to have 40 people mingling and socializing and do more of that, if you can. I just think that was, those are good things.
Angie agreed. So, yeah, we're on it. Yeah.
Great, thank you. And trustee Lair and I attended the Chamber of Commerce banquet in Baker that same evening, so we didn't get to participate in that, but that was a nice experience as well. So, all right, we'll move on to our committee chair reports. So let's start with trustee Cavanado on that.
Yes, I'll just provide the brief summary of the meeting that we held on January 23rd. This is the Academic and Student Affairs Committee. So we had an action item, which is also going to come up today, and the committee recommended to approve the educator equity plan for the 2024-2026 years. And again, this will be presented later by the Newman, so the committee recommended to approve that plan. Also, we had a seriously really excellent presentation by several individuals on campus that are working on initiatives to decrease barriers for students. You may be aware, and President Kelly mentioned that just a few minutes ago, but there are quite a few initiatives that are supported by grant money to work on student success as well, equity. So in that committee, we had a presentation specifically on holds. So as you know, students have holds for different reasons. Academic holds, of course, are important because they then require the students to meet an advisor and discuss their progress and whatnot. But apparently, there are many other types of holds that by the thousands, that actually our registers remarked upon, that are either redundant or not necessarily, or they are old holds that have not been removed. So they are working very diligently to So they are working very diligently to identify these holds and remove them when possible. And they have so far removed thousands of them, and the work is in progress. Also, Julie Henry, who leads the Moonshot for Equity Initiative, she talked about how they are continuing to gather this aggregate and use this aggregate data to get a better measure for student success, a more equitable evaluation of student success. Then another item is the accreditation. So Provost Geisinger provided an update on the upcoming accreditation renewal by the Northwest Commission on Colleges and Universities. So the accreditation is paramount for the institution because the accredited institutions can then obtain and disburse federal funding for student aid. So it's very important that we maintain our accreditation. So that cycle is coming up for renewal. And so that was just an introduction so that the board is aware that that cycle is coming up and that there will be work associated, lots of work associated with that. And finally, great updates on campus vitality, degree programs. We had a presentation from the master in mental health counseling that is going very, very well and attracting many students. We also had the presentation from the pre-professional advisor, Michaela Neal, with a student. They came and gave a really nice testimony about the importance of clubs and how the club assisted the students in preparing for professional schools, such as medical school or dental pharmacy and so on and so forth. And finally, also, we had a presentation by Lee Bailey about clubs in general and how they help the students in keeping a vital campus with many activities. And that's about it. So.
Thank you, trustee Cavanado. Trustee Stevens, would you share on finance committee, please?
Yes, thank you. Well, as you know, we're in a challenging financial time, and President Ryan has brought this up. And I just want to thank the finance committee because we've really looked at this very, very hard and worked on that. And so we are in a difficult situation. As many of you may know, our expenses go up 6% or more a year. To match that, our tuition never goes much above 4%, the state, of course, is not rising very much. And so we're in a difficult situation where, to match that situation, we've got to do something about it. And HAC came out with a very detailed report of the trues and talked about our financial situation as being fragile and said that, you know, in this situation, a balanced budget is critical. And that if you're in a situation where your income is at a certain level and your expense is going up, the only thing you can do at this point is cut costs. And this is what Dr. Ryan is talking about. And so I'm, we have a really challenging situation, but I also feel very good about the fact that we have such a good new president here working on it. And we have Leigh Ann Case, head of our finance committee, working this out. And we have, in the past two years, each year, reduced our fund balance by over $1 million. The budget for this year was for, I think, $3.5 million. But Leigh Ann Case has got ways to get, cut things down and do some savings. So hopefully, it's going to be like $1.3 million, which will get our fund balance right at 20. So we're right there. But next year, if you look at the projection for our budget next year, it's $5.5 million will come out. And if you dare to look at 2026 or more, you don't want to look because that's the end of the fund balance. So you can tell that this is a very serious situation. But the good part is we have a wonderful staff working on it. And the thing I really think is good is we have a wonderful eastern community that we're like a family. We all work together. And everybody is working together to get this down. And so that's our challenge, but thankful for all the folks here. We're going to do that. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Stevens. Trustee Mabbett, would you share governance committee?
You'd be happy to do that. Thank you, Chair Martin. The governance committee spent most of our time on two different board statement amendments. And I won't go into detail because they're on action items for today, if you had a chance to read them. We did spend a fair amount of time cussing and discussing. And trustee Hoffman stayed awake through the whole time. It was really good. Oh, okay, then, darn, sorry. I didn't catch you nodding off. In all fairness, it does feel like some tedious work, but it's important foundational work. So when you enter contracts or are not exactly sure about your structure, you want to make sure you got it right. And I think the committee did a really good job with that. We heard a legislative update and don't want to steal any of Tim's thunder, but once again, he's hard at work at that. And we also talked about the official record of board business, which again, sounds pretty boring, but it's pretty important. And I think this board and the board before us has worked very hard in the past several years to be as transparent and accessible as possible. And I think our recommendation reflects that as well. So thanks to the committee, and Chris does all the heavy lifting for us. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Mabbett. As Chris stated earlier, we didn't have any requests from the public, written requests, but we do have a few folks that would like to give public comment during this section. Secretary Burford, will you please manage our public comment today?
Certainly. Thank you very much. So let's take a look at the list here. Thank you. So we have three folks. Nathan, I'm going to call you last. We have a couple speaking of life on behalf of SEIU. And we'll start with Jamie Baker. Jamie, if you could go to the podium and attempt, try to keep your comments within three minutes. That would be helpful. And state your name again when you start.
My name is Jamie Baker. I work for the College of STEM in the Clinical Mental Health Counseling Program. And I wanted to thank you for allowing me to come to the meeting today and tell you my story. Since I'm restricted to three minutes, I have provided a handout that goes into more details. I'm hoping you'll take a few moments to look it over before you recycle it. Please understand that this is my story. Yet many of my coworkers are in a very similar situation. If you look at the front page or the first page, then you will notice that my income and my payments are very close to the same amount. There's a difference of only $38.68. But keep in mind that that is for food, shelter, utilities, and transportation. Nothing else. Just the basics. That does not include clothing, personal hygiene, prescriptions, cooking supplies, laundry supplies, vehicle maintenance, or housing maintenance. Again, this is my story. This does not include the cost to feed my husband or my The next page pulls information from my W-2. And the reason that I decided to share this was I wanted you to see how much I pay in taxes. Guess what? I don't stop paying taxes until February 27. At that point, I get to start bringing money home to me. So right now, I'm working for free. Just a little realization there. So how did I come to these numbers? If you look at the next page, I have provided a breakdown of the cost of food, electricity, and so on and so forth. I did the best I could to find actual true numbers. There is a column for my numbers, and the food is an estimate, and we'll get into that later. But I tried to go off of Oregon's averages when possible. And when I couldn't find them, then I had to use US averages. Again, not going into a lot of depth here. I'm hoping that you'll look at it on your own. But if things increase just 4%, there's another column that shows that at that point, I become negative. So then on the next one, it's where I came up with my grocery totals. Keep in mind, this is eating the exact same food every single day for 30 days. I personally don't think that the meals that I have listed here are very extravagant. Turkey sandwich for lunch, hamburger for dinner. But the top bar only indicates one slice of bread because two slices is too much. So on the second chart down, you'll notice that the breakfast has changed a little bit. I have a caffeine addiction, so I wanted to be realistic and add in how much I'm paying each month for caffeine. But I tried to give you an actual, this is my story, cost. And when you're looking at my food, keep in mind, does not include cooking oil, does not include salt and pepper, does not include dish soap to wash my dishes. It's just the amount to feed me for a month. The last page is just an inflation chart that I found that gives you a basic idea of what the average inflation is. So what I would like to ask you now is, can you $763.05 a month? I can't. I have a medical issue that requires a prescription. I have a vision issue that requires glasses. I have a wonderful job that requires professional attire. I live in a beautiful valley that requires snow tires and snow clothes for my safety. I'm lucky. I have a spouse that can pick up where I can't. Unfortunately, I have coworkers that are not that lucky. They are picking up second, third jobs to be able to provide for their families. So you've heard my story. And what I would ask is, if you were in my shoes, what type of cost of living increase would you be requesting if you had this as your budget? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next person is Joe Hickerson.
Good afternoon, everyone. ... grappling for the university with the same issues that we as individuals are grappling with. I was going to read you a bunch of facts, and I'm not going to do it. So we're going to see how this goes. We have people who work full-time for the state university system that are shameful, but it is what it is. So I am the, I'm sorry, my name is Joe Hickerson, and I am the bargaining delegate for SEIU at the bargaining table for classified and amenable agreement. But one of the things that we're really asking for is, if you look at state contract, basically that. Not because we think the state and coming up over the course of this five-year contract. In the first two years of the contract, which has now bled into closer to three years of the contract because we've been negotiating, classified staff only received 5.6% COLA. As of September, I believe inflation had risen to 17%. We're asking to be made whole in the past. And in the future, we're hoping bargaining are going to keep us whole all the way through. But we may not quite make it. We may be behind again by the So we have been taking cuts and taking cuts and taking cuts. The classified staff workforce, we're tired, struggling to survive, as Jamie pointed out. And that's all I'm here to say today, is please know that the bargaining understands that you face the same challenges that we face. But we can't not take care of these people anymore. They have got
Thank you, Joe.
Could I make?
Oh, certainly.
I turned it off.
Now, we had another person sign up, but I think you're wanting, you're going to withdraw. Is that correct? Okay, so we are done with our public comment for the morning. Thank you.
Thank you. That's true.
Yes.
Thank you, Nathan, for showing up today.
We are now moving into our consent agenda. We had a recommendation to remove one of the items, and I will let that person that recommended that get to that point. When we come to our consent agenda, it's voted on as a block. If any trustee wishes to withdraw one of the items on the consent agenda, we will move it to another point of our agenda and discuss it at that time. So trustee Hoffman, would you like to share your
And that pertains, I guess we're going to discuss this later in the agenda, is that
Yes.
strategy? It just relates to how the minutes are going to be kept in the future.
Your mic's not, sorry. If you could repeat. Yeah. Sorry, if you could just repeat that for the folks.
So, yes, I would like to extract Item H, Amendments to the Board Statement Number One, regards how the minutes will be kept in the future. No big deal. I support what the recommendation was, but it's just a matter of how we're going to keep track of the success or the failure of that over time. And are we planning on talking about that right now or later? I wasn't sure.
Well, let's go ahead and do that. And then as we vote on the whole block, maybe we can do that at this time.
Okay, so basically, hopefully you've had a chance to look, but the recommendation is to allow the video to be the official minutes of the meeting. And then there will be a summary of the minutes that are written. That may work really well. It may work not so well. And then what I think complicates that further is, you know, we have AI coming up. I've been in meetings just in the past couple of months where the AI actually has kept very good minutes at the same time, in real time, so to speak. So I think a lot of things are going to happen in the next year. So all I'm asking for is that staff report back to the board in a 12-month period of time to tell us how it's working. time to tell us how it's working. So, so, so that's all. Whether the reports, the, the governance committee or the board, I, I guess I don't care. My only concern about, but just going to the governance committee is unless you go to the committee meetings, you really don't know what happened with the exception of the committee chair reports, because guess what? There are no minutes of those committee meetings at, at this particular time. So, so, yeah, I guess that's a little burr under my saddle, but that's a different story. So anyway, that's all I would, would you like a motion to, to, how do you want to do this, Madam Chair?
Well, I, what I would suggest first of all is that Secretary Burford give just a very brief outline of, of what it was for the folks that didn't attend the governance committee meeting, just so they're kind of up to date. And then we, so once he does that, we'll, we'll move to the next step. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. It is, it's in the cover sheet, but essentially what I asked the committee to recommend, and which the committee did unanimously recommend to the board, is that we go from having written minutes, which are the, which are themselves the official record, to adopting the audiovisual recording as the official record. I would still maintain more concise minutes that mention the motions made and essentially indexed to the recording. But it would be a considerable saving of time for my office, of time that's currently spent summarizing conversations, making judgments calls about what to include and, and leave out. And that's the essence of the recommendation. It's partly prompted by, we're all tightening our belts and I'm trying to find efficiencies. This is a place where I could find an efficiency in my office. I do want to say the audio recordings are on there. So, so you're right, I have not written minutes for, so the proposal is actually that as of January 1st of this year, the recordings would be the official record. The minutes that have been, you know, accepted by the board for prior meetings would remain the official record of, of prior years. So yes, I haven't drafted any proposed minutes for the governance committee yet, because I'm hoping I won't have to. But the recording of the meeting is on our website.
Thank you, Chuck, Secretary Burford. And, and I think that we have been maybe ahead of the game from the beginning, beginning of our board meetings in having recordings, having this over the, so everybody can view it whether you're at this, physically at this meeting or not. So I think what I'm hearing, and I would like comment from the trustees if you have any thoughts along this line. So trustee Hoffman is wanting to go ahead and, and accept that motion from the governance committee, but tweak it a little bit and add that caveat that every 12 months, somehow the board has a chance to review and agree whether they think that that was a good, good way to record the meetings throughout the year. So I think I would like to entertain a motion if there is no comment.
Comment.
Okay. Trustee Reel.
Yeah. On that, I would say I would like a way to at least review. For me, I don't need to give any extra work to Chris and then his office, but it is very hard to go back through a recording and see exactly where something was. I much prefer seeing written, personally. I can go through a lot. I can do the search function and find out where my name is in those minutes and see anything that's referencing me, which is what I tend to do every time for my approvals of the minutes. So that's something that, you know, I don't know if I'm too fond of just the video idea. I just kind of wanted to put that out there a little bit.
Thank you so much, trustee Mendoza.
I think, I think for me is teasing out every committee plus full board, so all meetings are recorded, and that's the record. That's one bucket of thoughts to, I want clarity on that. And then the other clarity is similar to Cedric. Do we have enough information to make a good decision if we didn't see the video? Because there's going to be times where, I'll just say, we are, there are laymen that are working, doing 60-hour, 70-hour jobs already, and for us to watch a video, to understand the context and the variables in the situation, sometimes it's going to be hard. Like we, it's good for us to have notes that have important information and the deliberation before the decision and the decision and the outcome, so that we can better understand that without having to spend 90 minutes or three hours to see what that video outcome was. So how do you, how are we going to reconcile those types of things? Those are more questions and concerns. So I would be in the, this, this, I would want us to think it through and have those answers.
Other trustee, yes, trustee Cullinan.
Thank you. I, I was on the governance committee, and I, and we had some of those same concerns. As I understand it, and I don't want to put words in Mr. Burford's mouth, but I think that what, what was explained to us is that there would be notes handwritten, or notes taken that would identify certain points in the video recording that would allow people to look up where motions were made or significant decisions were made. So you would not have to listen to an entire recording. And so minutes would still be taken, but probably wouldn't be as extensive, but we would still have a written record to refer to. And it would just simply mean that the video recording would become the official record, which actually has some value if you're really trying to be accurate. If there's ever a dispute, having the actual recording be the official record can be very beneficial. The other thing I'll just throw out is there was some discussion, and that's not necessarily part of this, is the technology is developing very quickly to be able to actually have a written record, as we've discussed, be part of a, of the actual recording. So I think we're in a place where a lot is happening very rapidly. But I, I think that we still, I'm a written record person, too, so I like to see something. I think we still have, will, will always have that available.
It's a man. And I, and I did want to add, we also agreed, and I don't believe it's in the agenda item, but we did agree that we would use the tools inherent with the Zoom recording that automates notes. They wouldn't be used as the official record, but we would all have use of that. So you wouldn't be stuck just with the abbreviated minutes or the recording. We would all have use of the unofficial record, which is basically the AI typing it up for us. So I wanted to make sure we were aware of that.
So actually, I'm going to contradict you. That's not where the conversation ended up at the committee meeting. I watched the video to double check before I did the board cover sheet.
That was my understanding of the conversation, that we had all agreed as a governance committee that that would be the unofficial record. Please do correct me if I'm wrong, committee. That was my understanding.
That is my understanding. But Chris, what, what did we actually say? And maybe we didn't actually vote on that nuance, I think, Dr. Ryan, but maybe.
Yes, in the end, the motion that was made and that was voted on was for the original proposal, which is what's in your staff cover sheet today. And I think that's part of the reason for Chuck's suggestion, because as technology evolves, you know, there's going to be a need to come back to this, maybe sooner rather than later. I will say, I never considered these things to be, you know, these things are evolving. We've actually changed our approach to both videos and minutes quite a few times in the last nine years. So, you know, Chuck's original suggestion that come back and report to the board or the governance committee about how it's going, to me, that was kind of like, well, I feel like I would do that anyway, but I don't think there's any harm in actually having a record that I'm required to do so. And yes, I just want to point out, as was discussed in the committee and was also, I believe in the materials, there, yeah, it does say that in the, in the cover sheet for this item. My office would still prepare a minimal summary of the meetings as an index to the recordings. This actually has its origin in a distinction between how Roberts rules handles minutes and how the state of Oregon handles written minutes. And the state of Oregon requires the minutes to contain a pretty accurate summary of the conversation. And that's actually where the challenge comes in. Whose comments, you know, how much is enough, how's enough? Whose comments stay in, whose comments coming out? That can take quite a while. Roberts rules does not, in fact, Roberts rules wants that stuff excluded. Well, Roberts rules would say if we were not under Oregon Public Meetings law, and we were just doing Roberts rules, it would be, you know, what was the agenda item? What was the motion? What was the vote next? So this index that I would be preparing would be consistent with Roberts rules, adding to it a timestamp for the particular part of the video. It would be acceptable under Oregon Public Meetings law, because Oregon Public Meetings law doesn't allow written minutes that way, but it does allow the adoption of the video as the official record. So the official record would be the video. The abbreviated minutes would be a tool for anyone going to the website wanting to access the material.
Thank you, Secretary Burford. Yes, trustee Stevens.
So I just want to add this additional thing. I've always been discouraged by the fact that we can't see the minutes from another committee before a board meeting. I've been very interested in what goes on the academic committee, but I can't see it until they have another meeting, meeting and approve the minutes. So if you could establish what you're talking about, maybe getting some abbreviated summary of the minutes, so you could, I can look up, oh, this is what the finance committee had done, or what other committee, it'd be very, very helpful, because it's one of the difficult things in this board is to know what the other committees are doing, because we don't really see the minutes.
Thank you. Any other comments on this topic? I, I really appreciate the discussion points that have been brought up. Yes, trustee Mendoza.
I think, I think my final comments are just, if there is, the, the video is the official record, I like the minimal survey or minimal summary of what took place, but if we have access to, just even access to the written element that gets done, that is all going to be very helpful. And for me, it's, it's just back to making good decisions. If we need information to make good decisions for whatever we're doing, and that's what I'm looking for.
I would like to, yes.
Just a point of order. So are we going to try to amend this language and then vote to add that amended language on the consent agenda, or should we pull this and have a separate action item?
I would like to finish this discussion with this particular topic. I would like a motion made to amend if, and vote on that, and then we will move on to the entire consent agenda with that being removed. So I would entertain a motion on the floor, please. Could you, could you state exactly what your motion would say? Because we've added a couple more pieces to that.
I can do that.
No, I won't do that, Madam Chair. I know someone who will.
So to go along with the, the, you know, the, the use of the video as the official written notice or written recording of the, actually, I don't say written, to, I'll just say, to go with the video as the official record, and in addition to the minimal or the summary that you're going to provide, having access to the unofficial written record of the meeting. So I would say, please amend the motion of board statement number one, conduct of public meetings to include unofficial written records of the meeting to be provided to the board.
And, and checks, or trustee Hoffman's original concern was that at the end of 12 months, that there would be checks and balances on this new system. So my suggestion, when trustee Hoffman brought it up, was that it be brought to the governance committee, which was Secretary Burford's suggestion, and then at that full board meeting in February, the governance committee would make a report on that, on what the governance committee decided. So if I can have a motion that is clarifying those two points.
I, I think, I think trustee Mendoza has made a different motion.
Should we separate those two amendments?
I think we, we do need, that's the motion that's been made.
Okay, I, okay, we don't want to combine it?
Well, I think we need to address that motion. So he's, he's proposing an amendment to the language that's been presented.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to amend the language that is in this board statement. Do I hear a second? Second. All those in favor, say aye. Whoa.
I, I just want to make sure I know, to amend that statement, but not as written. Is that correct?
That's right. And, and the board cover sheet, there is a quoted language, new language for section 4.3.
4.3, yes.
It does not currently contain what George has specified, and I want to be sure we're clear about it, that a summary will be written as, as, as an index for the recording. And I could add that sentence, if that's acceptable.
I think George is working on, that's what we're trying to.
He also said he wanted an unofficial written record. Yeah, to be clear, there were, yeah, he, his motion was for two items. One, the index, two, which was already included in your motion. The second was an actual amendment, which is the unofficial written record, which the governance committee discussed, and I don't believe we understood that that was not included in these. And the third motion, which is really the second, is.
Okay. So trustee Mendoza, would you please read us the exact wording that you would like to be voted on at this time?
I would just say, in addition to what's been written in 4.3, so there's new point, there's 4.3 in addition, please add having unofficial written record or access to the written record of the meeting, the unofficial written record for that meeting, and then having the, I use the word, in addition, a minimal summary of the meeting, which I think Chris was saying he was going to provide a minimal summary. So then it's clearly written in 4.3 that the video is the, the record. Yep. The unofficial written is we have access to, and then we have the written summary that Chris is going to provide, or the minimal written summary.
Good night. Could I say so? Trustee George.
Yes, just a clarification for me. I know there's been a reference about video versus recording, and when I look at the minute or the minutes that the committee provided was, or 4.3 is recording, it doesn't say anything about video. And I know that the video provides a picture of everyone, but it may not capture all the wording or the recording of individual. So I'm a little confused as, are we going with the video or are we going with recording?
So another amendment.
I believe Mr. Buford's, yeah, Gary, it does say video recording, and it says if that's not available, then written minutes will be done. So Chris has got that.
Trustee Cavanado. Just one quick, trustee George, did you get, is, is that satisfied for you? Okay, thank you. Okay, trustee Cavanado.
I was just going to suggest that you use the word transcript, because that is the technical word, is the transcript. It's the transcripts of the video recording that are downloaded in a separate file.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we will take a vote. All those in favor of trustee Mendoza's motion, please signify with a yes.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Trustee Reel is opposed. Okay, then, second motion would be trustee Hoffman's motion that there would be checks and balance, or some kind of clarification at the end of 12 months to the governance committee, then the governance committee report to the full board, just to see if things are going the way we wanted it to do. are going the way we wanted it to do.
Has that been seconded?
Yeah.
Motion, I'm asking for a motion.
Oh, I thought you were, okay. I will move that, that at the end of 12 months, oh, I move that at the end of 12 months, so in February of 2025, the Governance Committee will take up and review the video recording as the official transcript and review the effectiveness of that.
Trustee Cavanado moved, and Trustee Hoffman seconded the, the review at the end of the 12 months to the Governance Committee and then to the full board. All those in favor signify with a yes.
Yes.
All those opposed?
Madam Chair, I'll just correct you, I'm trustee Cronin.
What did I say?
You said Cavanado.
I'm sorry.
That's, I take it as a great compliment. Thank you. Can I, can I be trustee Cavanado all the time now?
You don't sound like her. All right. Any other comments? If not, I would like to hear a motion on the consent agenda. Now that H has been removed and voted on separately, we will vote on the remainder of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion on that?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Trustee Hoffman moved, and Trustee Mendoza seconded the consent agenda approval. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I promise never to extract another item.
You know what? I love this valuable discussion. I think it was very good. The committees do the hard lift, but then it is up to the board to make sure they're clear and okay with it, and we go through the protocol that's required of us, and that's the way it's supposed to happen. So thank you, Trustee Hoffman, for doing this, for this exercise for us. Thank you. Okay. No, I like it. It's wonderful. So we now move to our next presentation, which is by Ben Cannon, Executive Director of the Higher Education Coordinating Commission. Following his report, I will invite trustee comments and discussion. Ben, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for your record, Ben Cannon. As you said, I'm Executive Director of Oregon's Higher Education Coordinating Commission. Can you hear me okay? All right, head nods, thumbs up. Excellent. Thanks for having me again to deliver a brief report from the HAC in Salem. I'll touch on a few items, including the legislative session that began last week. But let me start by just acknowledging that, like you, we are concerned about the changes to the federal application for financial aid and challenges in the rollout of the FAFSA. It is affecting applicants all over the country and certainly throughout Oregon who have experienced greater than usual difficulties in completing what's meant to be a streamlined process for applying for federal and state financial aid. It's particularly relevant for our agency, for the HAC, because the FAFSA, that federal form that's undergoing, has been updated for this year and is the subject of these sort glitches at the federal level. That form is the basis, the form that students use to apply for most forms of state financial aid as well, and it's actually a wonderful feature of our state financial aid programs that most of them do not require a separate application to the state. They're automatically awarded state grants, particularly the Oregon Opportunity Grant, our largest state grant program, on the basis of their FAFSA alone. So the fact that the FAFSA rollout has not been smooth and FAFSA's are being delayed in their release to institutions and to our agency, we haven't received any yet for next fall, even though many students have attempted or have submitted them, means we're delayed in awarding those grants to students. We're delayed even in establishing our award categories because we don't yet have enough data to establish sort of how much we'll be able to award to high-need students in different, in different categories. The other challenge, I'll just, you know, note with this is the fact that, under the new formula for assessing student aid, that the U.S. Department of Education is using this here, something called a Student Aid Index, we expect that more applicants will be considered very needy. They're redoing the basis for how they determine and assess student need. That's appropriate. We think this is a overdue update to how a student need is assessed, but it also has the consequence of likely qualifying more Oregon students for the largest Oregon Opportunity Grants that we deliver. And that will create, or it seems likely to create, some budget challenges for us, and our goal is to continue to serve students, not just the very needy students, but students at higher income brackets. So more to come on that, but I just want to acknowledge, and I know this is something that all of our college and university partners are also tracking closely and concerned about, and adjusting their processes to accommodate. We are sharing that and, you know, will be communicating as quickly as we can what the HAC's plan for awarding for '24, '25 will be, once we have more information. Legislative session, I know Tim will, will give a report soon and will undoubtedly cover more than I. I'll just hit on sort of one item of shared interest, which is the work that we've done with Eastern, as well as Oregon's other technical and regional universities and Portland State, to develop a recommendation to the legislature for the release of the second tranche of funding that the 2023 legislature set aside to support institutional fiscal sustainability at those five universities. That's, it's about an $18 million set aside, but the legislature has to act in order for that to come to the HAC to make grants to the universities, including Eastern. We are pleased with, at the consensus that the work group that included HAC representatives, as well as representatives of the five institutions, faculty leaders, staff, and student leaders, were pleased at the consensus that we reached about that recommendation and about the process that we would use in order to make those grants, should the legislature agree with our recommendation and release the funding. I want to, in particular, draw your attention to the report that we, that accompanies our recommendations to the legislature. As part of this overall $25 million investment by the legislature last year, $100,000 was set aside for the HAC to use to support a contractor who would help in the analysis of the challenges that the five institutions were experiencing, including Eastern, and some of the opportunities that we had, and to work with the work group to develop this, this consensus recommendation to the legislature. So their analysis is, is quite in-depth. So they take the, the staff at the National Center for Higher Education Management Systems, or NCHMs, that's the contractor, looked closely at the financial position of the five universities, at the enrollment, demographic, and economic, workforce trends, at the missions and scopes and changes at the, at those institutions, and provides quite a bit of analysis. Some of that is in appendices to the report, so if you've seen the NCHMs report, that's connected with our recommendations to the legislature, be sure to, you know, look as far as some of those appendices, because you see an effort on the, on NCHMs, the contractor's part, to compare institutions with counterparts across the country. They're very careful to kind of caveat those comparisons, but to note some of the opportunities that universities, including Eastern, have to become more financially sustainable, and some of the strategies that, that we, they, you can use to, to do so. There's a lot more, as I said, a lot more that I'm sure Tim will touch on, and I'd be happy to respond to questions if you have it about the legislative session, whether it's that true, the funding for the TRUs and PSU or, or other items that we're working on. Just a couple of other pieces of my report. Very excited that last night, overnight, we flipped the switch on a new Higher Education Coordinating Commission website. It's completely redesigned. It's much more user-friendly. It's trimmed down. It's not as sprawling, has much less redundancy. It's easier to navigate, visually much more appealing. We're very grateful to our institutional partners, including Eastern, in sharing photos of actual students, actual faculty, labs, sports, et cetera. So you get a really nice flavor for Oregon Higher Education across the many pages of the site. I want to highlight a new feature. In addition to sort of simplifying and updating the language and reorganizing the site, we have added some really impressive new functionality. And one tool that you may particularly appreciate and also may have feedback on is, are the interactive data dashboards that we are able to incorporate into the site for the first time. So if you go to the site and the URL is simply oregon.gov/hireed, one word, highered, just D E, and you look for the interactive data dashboards that are under the Strategy and Research section of the, of the site, once you get to that, look at public universities, and you will have the ability through this, through this tool that's best used on a desktop, not a mobile device, but I think if you have the right kind of app, can be done on mobile as well. But you'll have the ability to look at enrollment, completion, affordability data for Eastern students, for students at other institutions, similarly for our community colleges, overtime, the years of your choosing, by resident, non-resident status, by demographic breakout. So it's a, for the first time, this is all data that we have been collecting and reporting for a long time. There's nothing new about the data that we are presenting, but it's the first time that we've been able to give public users access to a interactive and dynamic tool that allows you to select for particular characteristics and hopefully answer the, the question that you came to, to the website for, or just learn something about the institution or set of institutions that you're choosing to look at. So that's, again, all live as of today. Welcome your feedback and encourage you to take a look. The final item I'll mention, I'm pretty sure I covered it last quarter when I presented to you, but the, the commission continues to move slowly towards its next strategic plan, which we expect to finish towards the end of this year. We've brought on board a, some facilitation support. Some of you will, hopefully many of you will experience that in terms of receiving an invitation to participate in an online survey, and then we'll be working with institutional leaders to also put together some focus groups. So whether it's Chair Martin or others from the institution who are invited to, to give that kind of input through our contractor, through our facilitator, into the process, into the, into the commission, which will ultimately be producing this document for the HAC and the state of Oregon. So that work continues. More to come. I think I probably said the same thing last time, but we expect to get those opportunities for participation out to you very soon. That's all I had planned to report on. Again, thanks for your service and leadership for EOU. I know our chair and vice chair are, of the commission are excited about their plans to visit EOU as well as all. I don't know if those dates are set, but they are planning to visit all of our colleges and universities over the course, public colleges and universities over the course of this year, and I send their greetings in advance. Thank you, Chair Martin.
Thank you, Director Cannon, and we would welcome, welcome them with open arms if they would come to Eastern Oregon University, and we would love to share what we hold so dear to our hearts. So are there comments from board members that would like to ask questions? Trustee Mendoza.
Hi, Ben. I'm going to put you on the spot, my friend. I just saw an article on folks introducing a House bill on going away from university trustee systems that are regional. What do you know about that? What can you share about that?
Yeah, thanks, George. So the bill, which was heard in the House Higher Education Committee last week, calls for a study of governance, and in particular, it, it asks or proposes that the study ask and answer the question of whether the governance changes that we made in Oregon between mostly 2011 to 2015, including the creation of the university boards, have been, have had a positive impact, and they suggest some of the kind of ways in which that could be measured. So to be clear, even if the bill passed and became law, it would only go so far as to study the question. It wouldn't actually change any of our existing governance relationships. Among the primary sponsors of the bill or advocates for the bill is the American Federation of Teachers. So, you know, I think it reflects some continuing skepticism about the impact and the value of those changes. I testified when the bill was heard last week, and I, I said, in, in a nutshell, I said, what makes me optimistic about the bill is the fact that, you know, look, I'm all for a rigorous study that can help us potentially understand some things about the governance changes and their impacts that we didn't know before, and perhaps lead us toward, you know, towards potential modifications. That feels to me very appropriate after 10 years to sort of step back, and if it's a well-designed and well-conducted study, like, see what we can find out. What makes me skeptical about the bill is the fact that many of the reasons that some of the advocates who spoke on behalf of the bill cited for doing it, some of the concerns that they expressed, which included rising tuition costs that have outpaced inflation, increasing reliance on part-time faculty, those are issues that predated, to be clear, predated the creation of university boards of trustees. They are not an expression or a reflection on the guy's governance, at least insofar as they, they're the continuation of a longstanding trend that it would appear have, and I'm quite certain, have a different sources and origins than how we've chosen to govern our institutions and our higher education system in Oregon. Final point on this, of course, is that I work, you know, I'm in close contact with colleagues all over the country, each of whom is working in a different governance model. Every, every state in this country has a slightly different way of, or a very different way of organizing higher education governance, and those sort of fundamental issues, issues related to cost and value and connection to workforce and connection to K-12 and community colleges and affordability, you know, faculty autonomy, issues of free speech, these are, these are issues across the higher education landscape in every state in the country, and it would be, I think, a mistake to attribute too much of what we experience in Oregon to the particular form of governance that we have, as opposed to other factors.
Thank you, Director Cannon. Any other comments, questions for Director Cannon? Thank you so much. We appreciate you. I think having these open lines of communication between HAC and our board is critical to the success of, of HAC and the success of our governing situation. So thank you for taking time to meet with us. Have a good day.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Really appreciate the invitation. I'll see you soon, I hope. Take care.
Thank you. I'm sure we will have opportunities as time goes on to delve further into Trustee Mendoza's article that he read, and that discussion is ongoing. So the next item is the capital request discussion item. This is discussion, not action. Leanne and John, please introduce yourself and your position, and then you may proceed.
I'm Leanne Case, I'm the interim Vice President for Finance and Administration.
John Garles, Director of Facilities and Planning.
And I'll, I'll just, if you can get your mics a little closer to your mouths, that'll just help for the folks both in the room and on the recording.
Director, John Garles, Director of Facility. Thank you. This is a, there is an action item, I believe, not, not just discussion, Chair Martin. So, but first, my presentation includes a overall cap- So the, so, but first, I, my presentation includes a overall capital project schedule. These are the current capital projects that are ongoing and anticipated. I do include the 25 to 27 capital project proposal to show in context with the rest of the, yes, next page. Yep. So the current projects, Grand Staircase and Inlo Hall, those are ongoing. We do have capital, CIR-funded projects. We have a project on hold, the South Ball Field Project. And then I do show the 27, 25 capital projects. This is the one that's being proposed that we're, we asking, requesting a vote upon. First one is the LoSo Hall major renovation. So this is the same scope that was developed in 2020, submitted in April of 2020, again in April of 2022. And we are hopefully, as what was said in the, by Trustee Hoffman, was the third time is the charm, we hope, on this proposal. It is a full renovation of the areas outside of McKinsey-Schwarz Theater, adding about 30,000 square feet of academic support space. The scope includes an orchestra pit at McKinsey, and then full removal of deferred maintenance and our capital renewal backlog. The project has been escalated due to current building cost indexes between 2020 and 2023, as well as projected from 2023 to 2020, this school year 2029. So what we've done is we've escalated the project to the middle of the academic year of 2028 to 2029. That also includes apprenticeship increase changes and, which is a current, we're quantifying that in the, in terms of their Inlo Hall project. So that brings up the project cost of about $57 million. Now, I have looked at the dollars per square foot. It's around $500 per square foot, and it's still less than the, our, the other universities will be submitting projects and have submitted projects closer to the $1,000 per gross square foot. So it is a lot of money, but from a dollar per square foot basis, we are being, we believe is reasonable compared to all the other universities. The, go ahead.
This is the only action item that we have, is just this particular project. But John will also talk about the.
Could you put that closer to your mouth, please?
Can you hear me now? This is the only action item that we have on the agenda. John's going to walk through the other projects that we have, but when he gets finished with the LoSo project, you can take action on it.
Do you want discussion on each one of these, or?
Just this one, just when he gets done with the LoSo project.
Okay, because I, I did have a question on that. Is that estimate, is that on a bid?
No, that is a projected project budget. We will be, we will be required to follow our procurement rules and do public bid, public procurement bidding. So that is not a bid. That is the overall project cost. That includes soft costs, permitting costs, construction costs. That's all encompassing.
Chair Martin?
Yes.
Mind if I ask a question? Can you, can you explain a little bit more on the deferred maintenance and capital renewal backlog, the 19 million? My first thoughts for me on the deferred maintenance is, so we have maybe up to $19 millions of deferred maintenance there, or the capital renewal backlog? Just explain that a little bit more so I can conceptualize that.
So we have around $19 million in the bill. As categories in the building is deferred maintenance, which is maintenance has been deferred, or capital renewal, which are code deficiencies, ADA code. Those are, those are items that if we go in there and we tinker with them, we, we have to upgrade. So that totals around $19 million. And that represents about 13% of our backlog campus-wide. So this building has one of the largest deferred maintenance backlogs from a building basis across our campus for E and, for E and G buildings.
I love that. And then, so I'm just thinking, okay, probably carpet and windows and all kinds of things that need to be updated besides ADA, but stores, all kinds of things.
Full renovation. Building envelope. New energy code.
Trustee Stevens.
Yeah, I just, what, what is the major pool of money that HECC has to give out to all the different universities? You know what that is?
It is a, it's public bond funds, and I can't remember the exact name, title of it, 11G or is 11Q?
Yeah, 11G. It's unknown. So HECC will go, we will submit our proposal along with all the other universities in April, and then they will score them. And in the next legislative session, they will put forward whatever capital projects they, they want. And then from there, those will be approved or not approved by the legislature.
And I believe it's totaled, I could look in the past, it's around $350 million is what they've had as a bonding capacity historically. Thank you.
Remind everybody, I know it's annoying to speak so close to this, but it's really critical that, that we are close to that. Trustee Cavanado.
Yes, I have a question on the fiscal impact that is mentioned in our cover sheet. It says the EOU will need a two-month, 3% of this project.
Yes.
For $1,711,800. Where will that money come from? How is that going to affect the current president effort to balance the budget? And when would that money be actually needed? Is it like a, is it real money or is it like a, some other match? Or what is that?
That is a required 3% match by the state. It will, it will come from EOU funds over the fiscal years of '27, '28, and '29.
I, I would just share some of the renovations reduce expenses, right? So particularly when we think about energy savings, right? That, that's one of the things the building provides, and I don't want to mislead you, right? And say, oh, the money is just in the sky or whatever, you know? But, but there are savings that come from this kind of construction of what is a very old building at this point. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor this point. And thank you, Trustee Cavanado. I actually had the same question. And when I read this the other night, I was wondering if there's opportunities to do like campaign fundraising separate from looking at our general fund, like sponsor a brick or, you know, a capital fundraising, et cetera? And if not, are we in good shape to meet, find that match money?
Well, I would of course defer to Vice President Seidel on the fundraising piece of it. But yes, we will be building it into our budget. We had built in, when we went forward in 2020, we had built in the match, which was smaller, obviously, because the project was smaller, into our '25 and '26 budget. We've since then pulled that out, but we will, in the next, I always keep a five to 10-year budget and stuff, so we're building those in. So it's not going to be unexpected costs, but it does have an impact on Eastern. Doesn't mean we have to use all E and G funds. If we have other resources through auxiliaries or some other funding source, we'll certainly look at that first. So we don't have a 100% drawn out funding plan for the additional 1.7, to be perfectly transparent.
Just to follow up, thank you for that. It's a, it's a, it's a heck of a deal if we, but it's still, to Cavanado's point, is money we need to come up with. So thank you, appreciate that.
Trustee Cronin. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Trustee Schreiber. I, so you're sharing the mic, right?
We are, we're sharing. This was one of the points on our legislative agenda while we were in Salem and in our EOU breakout groups. And I just wanted to add a little bit of context about what some of the other students said and why this is so important. The first reason being that this is where the tutoring center is. And one of our students that was in my group was also a student athlete, and she said sometimes during peak times, like midterms or finals, that space is so full that there's like not enough room for everyone. But isn't it amazing that so many students want to go there that we need to build more room? And isn't that also helping us get student completers and retention? So that was one incredible point that got brought up. The second was that LoSo Hall is also a community hub. They brought up the show by the, I believe it was the music department, the theater department, I don't know. Music? Yeah, yeah. They said it's, McKinsey's a 450-seat auditorium, and it sold out three times in a row. And I came from a small, teeny tiny town where going to La Grande was going to the big city. So having the opportunity for not only potential students, but for our community members to be able to come and visit that space and feel like they're part of something on that campus is really cool. The third point I wanted to bring up is, like I said, we talked about this in our legislative visits, and Representative Smith was most likely the, he was the most receptive. He's an EOU grad, and he talked about being in LoSo when it was first built. So if he was in there when it's first built, and he's the longest-serving legislator in Oregon, it's maybe time for some updates. But nevertheless, this project is incredibly important to our student success, mostly for that academic support. And maybe that could even tie in our one-stop-shop priority in there, too. So I just wanted to add those thoughts that came from the students as well.
Thank you very much. And remember, I said Dr. LoSo was my writing professor, and they named it after her. So we're talking ancient history there. I, I had one quick question, John. So just kind of reflecting on our staircase issue that we want, if, if you can't get a bid that matches this, will you start eliminating some pieces of that then?
Absolutely. We always will craft within the project budget that's established.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I, oh, Trustee Hoffman.
I was just going to say, as someone who went to this university before there was a LoSo hall, I would move that we approve submission of the renovation project to HECC to be considered for 2025 to 2027 capital projects middle. I would add to that, that the HECC scored of 91 or more, but that would be inappropriate, so.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Trustee Hoffman moved, and Trustee Reel seconded the motion to move forward with this proposal. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion is passed. Is that what you needed, John?
Thank you very much, yes. Now that, now additional hard work and refinement begin, remains to be between now and April with Vice President Case, Vice President Seidel, Dean Laus.
Thank you for all your hard work. I know this is not an easy sell here when we're talking those kind of dollars in these times. Thank you. You may proceed.
Quick update on the staircase. It's been removed, and we are in the throes of the redesign and crafting a project within the budget of what will be installed. They don't have a much more new information since the finance committee met in January 23rd. We do anticipate meeting later this week or early next week with the design-build contractor. They are working behind the scenes in doing that crafting. Again, we'll, they'll try to develop multiple options, but we're limited with the terms of what can we put back that meets historic preservation requirements, as well as the budget and our, our goal of allowing access to go from the top to the bottom. The, but we are still on task for a May 2024 start in terms of reconstruction activities going between May and November, and we will expend the ARPA funds by November or December, the deadline.
Just your case.
Sure.
John, what, I know that, that just makes me think like, it's going to look a little bit, you know, do you have any renderings on your, your top one or two rendering?
Not yet.
It's not yet?
No, that's, that's what's being refined. And the renderings, we're, hopefully we'll show phasing. I do want to point out on this, on this drawing, and this is what both Sarah Hollenbeck, our capital project manager, and I looked at. To our eye, those look very similar in terms of what was been excavated. So we hope putting back should be very similar to what, it looks, it looks, I mean, putting back should be, oh, um, how do I say this? We will be able to put back what we have without limited earthwork. I'm just thinking from an engineering standpoint, sorry. Yeah. Not a cost standpoint, from an engineering standpoint, looking at.
Just candidly? I'm, I'm pleased with that, that we're, have that at least, and that we have that to work with. I, I thought it'd be worse. So, so I'm just going to say it that way.
I'm glad to hear that.
I thought it'd be smaller, and I thought it'd be not as nice. I thought, so that right there.
Well, this, yeah, this is existing. So, I mean, this is what, what was.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we have to meet certain parameters in terms of shipper requirements.
Yeah. It's bigger than I thought. That's my point, I think.
And I do want to point out the, the windows on the north side. Those are.
I was just going to bring that up. It looks, it's really a nice improvement.
My, my counterparts at Southern did not get that. They wanted that when they did their renovation of Churchill Hall, which is there, which is exactly like Inlo, so.
There we go.
So in, onto Inlo, we are on, remain on budget and on time. We've crafted a solution to meet the $16.3 million. This is the construction budget. The overall budget was 20 million. Demolition is nearly complete. In fact, by now, I think this week, it is complete. HVAC is being installed. Seismic shear walls have started. We are building that up. We have a pretty big deadline on the shear walls of, and what's called Jip Creep Installation by February 19th. And then there's going to be a lot of work on that second floor from the 19th on. We've been asking the contractor to work on a concurrent trade basis in zones so they could start making, what they've said, making a lot of hay early in the growing season. We have completed the CIR, our annual CIR process. We have a prioritized list that we're hoping to execute on soon, and the generally consists of capital renewal in Badgley, Ackerman, Library, Emergency Backup Power Systems, and a steam pipeline. I'm sure there's a lot of others. There's a lot of other needs, but those are generally what the building's prioritizations are. Questions, comments? Thank you very much.
We will be working with Board Secretary Burford on some tour availability times at the next board meeting. Obviously, it, it depends on what the, for, we're out in the construction of Inlo Hall, but I'm hoping to get you over there so that you can at least get a firsthand look at it, depending on what the schedules look like in May. But we're pretty excited about that piece of it. Can't say enough about the, the contractors that worked on the Grand Staircase demolition. They weren't, not only.
Could you please speak closer to your mic? Thank you.
Yeah. I turned my hearing aids up, and so it's really loud to me. The contractors on the demolition of the staircase, they were not only fast, they had to mobilize twice because of an error with the state preservation organization. They were also very clean. I mean, they, they cleaned up every single day. I parked down there, so I took a picture every day, drove John completely insane, as well as Dr. Ryan and Tim, because I wanted him to see the progress. It was just amazing to watch. It was just amazing to watch. We haven't heard anything that I'm aware of from the neighborhood, and the neighborhood is right there at the bottom of the staircase, so, um, kudos to them. They, they did a great job and Sarah and John for managing that project, which could have gone south pretty quickly with the community, um, as close as that neighborhood is to, to all of that very large equipment, trees coming down, all of that.
Oh, I do have one more thing, Trustee Hoffman. I do have a bucket of rubble. You have to get the gunny sack from Vice President Seidel, though.
Deal, deal. So what he's talking about is I'm selling bricks for, selling the rocks for a hundred bucks a rock. It'll go, it'll go back into the staircase project. So if you wanna, if you want a chunk of the old staircase, we, we got it to sell. I want to know if, on the tour, we get to see Secretary Buford's new office.
Absolutely.
Perfect. Is it great? It has a banner or something? I don't know.
Yeah.
Cheryl?
Thank you.
Here, Martin. Occupancy when? When can EOU regain occupancy back into the building?
We are looking at occupancy for the first floor for sure by, um, August 31st. That's the goal. For fall, we'd like to get the first floor back online 100% by fall 2024. Um, we're still trying to get that for the second floor, but that is to be determined.
I'm sure President Ryan would like to have an official office.
Well, I think she, yeah, but.
He told us I'm very low on the priority list. Last priority.
Last priority. Student services for sure, uh, by fall 2024 is what Dr. Ryan's told me first.
Exactly. Student services. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
So, um, thank you. Uh, thank you. I know that this, uh, these are big numbers. Well, actually, when I got, I was preparing my package and I got to these numbers, I went, wow. Um, so I am torn a little bit, but I love with, with Trustee Schreider share with us of the importance of the space, not only for the students, for the community. I remember my grandpa say, don't ask me how much the barn is gonna cost. Tell me what we can do without it, from an old farmer's standpoint. So however, these investments are overwhelming when we compare to the testimony that we heard about the $40 a month gap of some of our employees. So I am in support and I realize how much we are investing in a space. You know, universities go online, don't have this. They don't have to put all this capital in a building in, in some maintenance that is backtracked and $90 million of things, vacuum HVAC. But now that's why also there is a disadvantage in investing a lot in the capital, but also there is a preciousness there that goes outside these walls also for the community. So thank you. I know that it's hard to say, yes, I'm looking at the numbers that, oh my God, really? This much money? And we all know how much construction has boomed and escalated in the last few years for anything we do. So I appreciate it and, um, it's gonna look great. Thanks. I love the idea of the rocks.
Trustee Cronin.
A, a rock for a graduation. I think, I think she'd love that.
That's a great idea. And, and thank you, Trustee Valerio, for your, um, comments on realizing the gravity of okaying that amount of money when we do know that there are lots of issues that are involved as well. So I, I think everybody has that on their mind, but you expressed it for us, so thank you for that. Uh, if there are no more comments, we're going to take about a 15-minute break so everybody can stretch their legs and get some refreshments and we'll, um, meet again in about 15 minutes.
Whatever refreshment you wanted, well, maybe not what you wanted, but what was available. So I would like Tim Seidel to take over, introduce yourself, please, and give us your update. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Chair Martin. And joining me today also is Anna Richter-Taylor, who works with us on legislative affairs and public affairs strategies. So she's on the screen with us as well to add in comments. And with that, let me jump in here. So we're right into the February session. You heard a little bit of that already from Deidre and Cedric talking about Lobby Day last week, and then Ben Cannon and his comments as well. We're just about a week and a half into the short session. As you know, this is supposed to be a time when legislators are just dealing with emergency situations and fixing really things that need to be fixed. But what we usually do now is cram about a year's worth of session into a month. So we're pretty busy on these things. We are right now tracking, we had one deadline passed, which carved some of our bills off of our list, so we're now still only tracking about maybe 150 bills. There is a couple more deadlines. I included those deadlines in the cover sheet, and you can see when things start to kind of drop off. It's both a good thing and a bad thing, because when some of those bills drop off, you know they're done, and we can refocus on the current efforts, or we can move ahead on bills that are continuing to move forward. I'll touch briefly on Lobby Day, because I know that our student government folks are going to want to chat about it as well. But we had around 175 to 200 students at the Capitol amongst all the universities. The students from Eastern spent the morning visiting with legislators about our EOU's priorities, and then we merged with the rest of the universities and then went back to the Capitol for the afternoon and spent that time talking about some of the bigger picture items that all the universities are focused on. In the morning, we talked about Losa Hall renovations, the $57 million that we're requesting as this project goes forward. We spent that time really trying to socialize legislators about the needs for it. And again, our strongest advocates, as Deidre pointed out, are students. When they talk about the needs and how those buildings are used, that's what legislators listen to, that's what they want to support. We also talked about a Smart Stop Center. That's literally an idea that President Ryan's identified as a priority. And if we can pull together some resources to help students get everything they need, or as much as they need, in one place, that really saves them a lot of hassle and time from bouncing around. And it was fun listening to students talk about, I've had to go here, and then here, and then here, in these different buildings. And we kind of discovered this with the renovations in Low Hall, because we had to centralize so many of our efforts, our offices, in Gilbert Center. And so students have had this benefit to go in there and literally talk to somebody at one office, and then go down two cubicles and talk to somebody else and get the rest of their problem solved, and then be done and not have to run around looking for folks. We also talked about support for the true PSU sustainability funds, and Ben talked about that a little bit as well. That is up in front of the legislature. We've provided those reports. I talked about this in our committee meeting, at the governance meeting, and also added those links into my cover sheet, so you can see what was presented. This went in front of the legislature on Monday morning, bright and early at 8:00 a.m., and we had good feedback on it, really, a lot of positive feedback, especially how the universities are collaborating and working together to find solutions for students. We also talked about our student trustees. Again, ASU, you will probably cover this a little bit, but we have the opportunity to make recommendations through our student government to the governor's office for who they think would be a good representative for them on our board. And they presented those folks and asked for support from senators and received really good feedback on it. So the top, sorry, in the afternoon, we talked a little bit about the Student Emergency Needs Package. These are funds for student basic needs programs and open educational resources. Those bills are moving forward. We're watching that very carefully this week. We also asked for additional funding for our Strong Start program. This is what helps us with the bridge, the summer bridge programs, where you heard from those folks, I think, last fall. That's another significant investment by the state with schools like Eastern. And then the Behavioral Health Workforce Project. This was for $6.2 million to grow not only EOUs, but all of Oregon's behavioral health workforce. There's such a need for it here. And we've partnered with Eastern Oregon Coordinated Care and Greater Oregon Behavioral Health here at Eastern with those programs. They're providing scholarships for us, but also they then came and testified on our behalf for the importance of this and this bill. The benefit there is that'd be about $1 million for Eastern for us to help support our program. That's going to help grow that program. We're all ahead of a lot of other schools in terms of the development of these programs. So we'll hopefully capture more of that workforce and more of that enrollment. So we're excited about that. And then the last piece doesn't really directly apply to Eastern, although we do get some resources and support from it, is the Semiconductor Workforce and Research Needs. That's a $30 million package. We see some of that, but a lot of that's going really towards folks in what we call the Silicon Forest to support that. But it does help grow educators, I'm sorry, it helps grow universities statewide. So the bills that we talked about earlier, House Bill 4125, this is the study that Ben mentioned in his talking points. Where we're at on this bill right now is we have some amendments that we're working with, the bill sponsor on, to try to mitigate some of the issues and really try to address some of the long-term implications, looking at more longevity in the study and ensuring that we have really adequate time to evaluate it, and try to remove some of the language that does look at as a recommendations for other changes. As Ben pointed out, and I got to sit next to him at an event, and thank you for your testimony, I really appreciate it. And he and I have been around when we had state system of higher education, and when we had governing bills, boards, and we both agreed that the problems were there before we had governing boards. They haven't really changed. Oregon has not invested heavily in higher education for 20-plus years. That said, this study, you know, has been presented to us, and President Ryan and I met with the bill sponsor earlier this week, as an opportunity to really take a look at what the needs are in higher education and try to argue for more funding. It is interesting how the bill came about, and it is unfortunate that the hearing was modeled in a way in the media that it made it sound like an investigation, even the bill sponsors were saying that's not what we're looking for. But when you start talking about the issues facing students and faculty at our universities, it largely comes down to a funding issue. And a lot of it is spurred by the issues around the PAC-12. So it's unfortunate that football is the driving force behind paying attention to higher education funding for all of our students in Oregon. I might pause there. Anna, did you have anything you wanted to add on that?
I mean, I think that there's, I mean, I think that this is an opportunity as much as it's a challenge and a risk, I guess. I think that President Ryan and Tim have been doing a very good job of talking to legislators and shifting the conversation to the root issues that we need to be facing. And always, we're going to advocate for as much money as we can for EOU, and there should be an equity component to any additional resources, not just for one university. So I think that message is getting out there very well. And I have heard from Representative Lively that he's been impressed with Dr. Ryan and that the testimony last, gosh, I'm losing track of months, was that January or December? But that is very effective, and that the work that you're doing at EOU is very impressive, and they'd like to see and hear more about that and invest more in that. So I just think we have a risk of, I'm going to be very frank, there's kind of a history of universities fighting amongst themselves. And so depending on how this plays out in a more public way with the media and reporters, I think we can either shift it to the focus we want, which is the root cause and the issues of underfunding higher ed, and that needs to be addressed long term, and try to avoid that this is about one football school over another, or the universities, you know, fighting amongst themselves, and then allowing those critics of the governance system to point to that for a reason for change. So that's kind of my assessment today at 3:19. But, you know, it changes very rapidly in that building, so.
The timeline on this bill is the report would come back to the legislature by fall, basically by September 15, 2024. We believe that's an incredibly tight timeframe to try to get this much information pulled together in a meaningful way, and that's one of the things we've pointed out. As places that do a lot of research, we know what it takes to do adequate research, and we're hoping that we'll get a longer span of review. we know what it takes to do adequate research, and we're hoping that we'll get a longer span of review. Also, a longer span of review overall for the impact of state funding for higher education. But I also want to pause there, because I know this has come up with legislators as well as trustees, and wanted to see if any of you had questions that we could address on that specific bill right now.
Tim, when Mr. Cannon was talking, I wrote down here, according to the chair's request, I said--
Can you move your mic closer?
Oh, there it goes again. So I wrote down here that maybe the bill could be amended to call for a study to evaluate the impact of legislative funding decisions on Oregon's higher education.
Actually, I believe that's in the bill. Yeah, we did ask for that, and we have support of it. We're hoping to see those amendments go through. There's a work session scheduled for this bill tomorrow. If the bill, if those amendments do not go through, we expect they do. But if they do not go through, then we'll be taking some additional action, let's say, you know, and continue. Right now, we're really in opposition of the bill as it is until we see some amendments that can help mitigate some of these issues. And then even then, we'd maybe just be neutral on it.
Other comments? Trustee Mendoza?
More or less comments. I think sometimes for me, I do wind up thinking through a school district lens, so just know that there's a bias towards that. And I think of like, you know, local school boards, local context, local decision, local control, and advocacy towards that for regional institutions, for their region, their context, and their local control. And then the other part of it is like lump in yourselves with public ed as much as you can to our detriment. Because I mean, I advocate for our resources, and we're pretty good at advocating for resources. And of course, I don't want it to take away from K-12 resources. If anything, I want it to be in addition to. And K-12 has been good at advocating for High School Success Act funds or Student Success Act funds. And somewhere in all of this, the more higher ed can lump themselves into, you need us, just like a K-12 institution, and we need to be funded, just like you fund your K-12s. And if anything, it takes a little bit more for kids to have innovation this way or innovation that way for their careers or other industries that they go into. Those are things that, however you advocate to think about those types of things. But again, it's, I just, the local context, local region, local control, to me, would be important versus the state just deciding what they think is best for Eastern Oregon.
I will share, I did tell Chair Lively that I didn't think Eastern Oregon would like reporting to Western Oregon.
And that resonated with Chair Lively, this is Chair Lively, who chairs the House Higher Education Committee. It really did resonate with him, and he brought that back to other meetings and actually echoed that. And we are looking at how we can try to find a funding stream similar to what we've been able to do with the Student Success Act here in Oregon, but a funding stream for higher education, because there is not a dedicated funding stream for higher education at this point in time. So I think Anna has her hand up, too.
Yeah, Anna?
I just want to, I mean, you're absolutely right on the K-12 component and everything that's been said is true. I think the challenge we have on one level is that the higher education system really has been created in a way that it pits universities against each other as opposed to working together. And I think in the K-12, you know, there seems to be less competition there. And I think that's something that we're trying to, at least, I think that message is starting to resonate a little bit, is that this system is created in a way that we're competing and having to fight each other for funds as opposed to rallying together to go in together for more resources as one. But that is how the formula is set up, and that's how a lot of the funding streams are set up, and that's unfortunate. So it's something we have to continue to battle.
Other comments? I, just for clarification, Tim, so the bill, the deadline or the date that you stated in, I believe, September, is they're anticipating the bill passes, the study is done, and that information, that doesn't really make sense.
It does. So if the bill passes right now, unless it becomes amended, it requires a report to be made to the Legislative Assembly by September 15th, 2024 on 10-plus years of governance by independent boards and more longitudinal data around ongoing funding for higher education in the state and what it looks like nationally. Yeah, it's a very finite timeframe to try to pull that information together. Actually, we were asked for a fiscal impact statement, what would that cost Eastern to do? And we said, well, we need part of an FTE to pull this information together. We're not in a position to be, we don't have somebody wandering around and say, hey, could you work on this while you're, you know, just sitting there? Everybody at this university is very busy, and so we would actually ask for additional resources to do it, as did our other technical and regional university partners.
Yeah, that was my thoughts exactly, and how much more beneficial that money could be used right here. The time and the money issues are going to be tremendous, I would think, so I think that would need to be addressed. I also, just one last comment. It seems like the issues that they're raising in this, really our governing board does not really have anything to do with that piece of it. And a lot of those issues that are, you know, those are issues that really are out of the purview of the board. It seems to me like, even like the cost of inflation and those kinds of things are really not. So to throw the governance of our universities into that same pot, it seems like several different buckets that they're trying to put the water all in one bucket, so.
Yes, absolutely. It is. It's a broad brush. And even in the testimony that was presented, we heard over and over again, these are really budgetary issues. These are financial issues in terms of investment for higher education. They weren't about how governing boards were making decisions. It was really more about, we're going to see how many, you know, what's the trend lines for faculty hires? And what are the trend lines versus adjunct hires? What are the trend lines for tuition increases and scholarships? They want, okay, we have that, a lot of that data already at our fingertips through different systems. But it was clear that the issue was really about two things. Overall funding for higher education and who gets to choose what conference you play football in.
And it's, well, I would just make sure that the board stays very abreast of this as it moves forward and that you all inform yourselves and be ready to make valuable comment as we move forward in lieu of what we do here at EOU. And I think we have a proven track record of how wonderful it is to have our governing body here locally. And so I think we all need to be very cognizant of this and what can we add to it to continue doing what we're doing. So we'll see where this bill goes. Okay, proceed.
Will do. I touched on Senate Bill 1592, which appropriates funds for distribution to the TRUs and PSU. This has been a long, ongoing project, speaking of trying to get something done from a legislative, end of one legislative session and before the start of another one, to come up with a full assessment process. We were able to do that. We had a lot of meetings, I think, as Director Cannon mentioned. But that moved forward. We're waiting to have a work session on that bill and get it moved so that we can get the funds released, so we can start using them. There's a process by which we'll have to then basically, you know, share what we're doing with a group that will be made up of representatives from each of the institutions. And they'll maybe ask questions about, have you thought of this? Or, you know, a review before the funds are fully released and we can start investing them. For us, it's still about, for Eastern, we focus those resources on retention and completion programs for our students. Sorry, I bounced. We also, oh yeah, sorry, I was talking about 1592, and I bounced to the wrong one, so my apologies. This was, the 1592 is the behavioral health bill. Sorry. That's one where, as I mentioned, we do stand to receive $1 million of appropriations for investments in our clinical behavioral health programs. I saw in my notes where it said TRUs and PSU, and I immediately went to the big project we've been working on. 4164, House Bill 4164, makes changes to a bill that was passed last session, requiring colleges and universities to conduct surveys on sexual misconduct. This is what the February session really is for, is to take a bill that was passed previously and make some fixes on it. So we don't have to try to survey all of our prospective students, for example, and also to mitigate some of the cost factors in there. So interim VP for Student Affairs, Colleen Cassio, has been working with us on that. But we're, that one's moving forward. That's a good one to see where actually, how it's supposed to work. Senate Bill 1552 is the education omnibus bill, so it makes changes to several K-12 and higher education programs. One of the, it does a lot of things. Again, this is a bill that's just moving. It requires changes to the Oregon Opportunity Grant to be voted upon by the Higher Ed Coordinating Commission and make some technical fixes. It also does facilitate directed admissions from Oregon high schools to Oregon colleges and universities, which is something we're going to be talking about here at this university with Superintendent Mendoza. Senate Bill 1550, it was going to transfer the duties, certain duties, functions, and powers related to teaching, administration, and personnel licensure from the TSPC into the Department of Education. This one is not going forward. We're not seeing it going forward, at least. And I don't know, maybe Dean Rayatt would be able to yell, too, if she had to, about any movement on TSPC. But we're not seeing that one go forward. So that's probably good. There were some issues around it, maybe just not right now is the time. I mentioned the TRU plus PSU Sustainability Funding. That information is in there. And then the session deadline, so Monday, we have to have work done in a first chamber work session or the bill doesn't, the bill dies in committee, a bill dies in committee. And then shortly thereafter, we have to have a posting into the second chamber. And you can see, it happens pretty rapidly. That's, as Anna mentioned, that's why things are happening on a minute-to-minute basis in the Capitol Building right now. But if everything works out, we'll be signee die by March 10th. And then we'll deal with the aftermath of this session as we prepare for the next long session. And I can stop there and see if there's more questions.
Any questions or comments from our board? Very important to stay engaged in these bills. And like you say, February short session was not supposed to have 400 bills looking at us.
No, ma'am. It was not. It's always, we see the list, and we think, oh, my gosh, how are we going to get these things done? Or are they even really going to move? But it is rapid fire. I have to tell you, I mean, we're busy. We're extremely busy. I feel for the staff, especially in some of the legislative management offices, how much work they have to put in for a month of a hard run. So it keeps us busy. And I might check, Anna, do you have other items you'd like to add?
The only other thing I would say is that they should signee die by March 10th, and then March 12th is the filing deadline for the next election. So it's kind of like you turn around, and then we'll see the election cycles start, and that's when. So I think a lot of what you're seeing in this session, too, is gearing and looking towards the election. So hopefully, we'll get through here without too much fighting.
Fingers crossed.
Thank you. Anything else, Tim, or is that?
I dig it. Just the other piece, folks asked, you know, how do we work together on these issues? So I work with not only my counterparts at the other institutions, but I also want to point out that the provosts are working together, the presidents work together all the time. We have our vice presidents for finance or in communication all the time, and we loop each other in. And there's a lot of crossover there, so we ensure that there are good communications, and that we're all sharing information so that we can make the best decisions possible as a group, which is, you know, we're not just in it for Eastern. I mean, there's Eastern priorities, and that's what we have to take to the table. This is how it impacts us. And then we look at what are the bigger overall issues that we need to really focus on for higher education in the state.
Yeah, and if I could just say one more thing, as much as this has been, I know that this is a really difficult time. And the last few years have been difficult. I also, after looking, working in higher ed space from various angles, including a governor's office, I think that with this, Dr. Ryan and the other presidents, and even the new University of Oregon president, there's some momentum and there's collaboration that I'm seeing that we haven't seen in a really, really long time. Not because people are fighting, but I just think that there's, it's a really good group of presidents. And I think that we have, or finally, as Tim said, even though it took a football conference to get people to wake up, I think that we're at a place where there's some momentum, and the legislature is finally realizing how important it is to fund higher education. So it's always a challenge, but I feel really optimistic that over the next couple of years that we can start making some major gains. And I think EOU is positioning itself very well for how important you are to the state, not only the region, but the state.
Thank you. Those are good words for us to hear. Anything else? Thank you, Tim. Oh, I'm sorry.
Tim, just, I don't know, maybe editorialize for us on the directed missions and FAFSA. Ben was hitting it. You're talking about it. There is going to be work on, you know, students graduating and being able to be admitted into a university and have support with FAFSA. The gap obviously is like, there's not enough kids that are enrolling into college, and they're trying to attack or address that gap. How big is this problem? And if we do things like this, the outcome is expected to be far more money for education or far more money for students? Why is this such a problem, and why is it so important?
Sure. Well, there's one issue right now that's going on at the national level is changes to the FAFSA. They've changed it, tried to make it simpler, but the rollout has been challenging, partially because they made it more accessible to more students. So you have a lot more people applying for federal student aid, which has slowed down the gathering of information so that we can get financial aid awards done at all the universities. So most universities are pushing out dates for decision dates. A lot of, we have a rolling admission deadline, but some schools, you know, they want to know if you're going to come to that institution by X date. And then they're trying to then also match up your financial aid award with that same timeframe. So if you have to move it around, as you guessed, then students might be saying, well, what's going on? I don't know what, where, am I going to get my financial aid? What's going on? Anytime you change a major deadline, that impacts, and in this case, millions and millions of students. We have, for example, the foundation pushed back our scholarship deadline by a month to ensure students have adequate time to get those applications in. Our financial aid office, Leanne and her folks are working on making sure that we don't, this doesn't impact our students negatively and that we're checking with them. At a statewide level, we're gathering up information on what the changes may be at each of the institutions so we can do a uniform release of information to say, here's what's going on. So that's the one piece of the FAFSA. What does it mean? It means that there'll be a lot more students eligible for federal student aid. We also expect a lot more Pell eligibility for students coming to school at places like Eastern. So while there's going to be a push on additional resources, there's supposedly some more federal aid coming for it. I've heard estimates as high as we may see, you know, double the amount of Pell awards in the state of Oregon, which would greatly help a lot of those students. It also means there could be projected shortfalls in the Oregon Opportunity Grant, the state-funded financial aid program. As we expand this, we're hoping that that will get filled in with these additional Pell Grant resources. So what does that mean, you know, again, for enrollments? It means it's a little shaky right now, because students are waiting to find out what kind of financial aid packages they're getting. They're asking a lot of questions. We don't want those students to say, well, forget it, I'm not going to go to college. We also want to make sure that if they have the opportunity to get as much funding for their education as possible, that we can get that to them as well and make sure they have it. The directed missions piece now ties into this, is now you're also creating more systems where students may get, like in the state of California, you apply to a central place, and you get a letter that says, hey, Tim, you've been accepted here, here, and here. Or sometimes they say, you've just, you know, thank you for applying to the California State University system. You've been accepted to CSU, you know, whatever, San Luis Obispo. And you're like, oh, okay, that's where I got accepted to. And you might have to figure out where else you're going to go to college if you don't want to go there. The directed mission legislation basically enables the HAC and others to try to work on how we could provide or facilitate a directed admission process. That's going to include input from our enrollment managers across the state and admissions folks and registrars and others to how we can manage through that system. It seems to be a catch 22. You know, some folks are worried that it means that if we're just going to limit where you get accepted to, or does somebody get to control where you get accepted to, or does it help facilitate decision-making? And maybe a student hears about Eastern that otherwise wouldn't have heard about us. And they say, oh, I've also been accepted to Eastern. I'm going to check that place out and then find it's a great fit for them. So that's another piece of it. So there's also a lot of work that we'll have to go into coordinating that kind of effort. And so that's, we're waiting to see if this funding goes through with this omnibus bill, and we see some resources for it, then we'll have to have decisions about how that happens. Does that help?
Good.
It's a data dump?
Okay, thank you, Tim. Thank you, Tim. And we'll move on to the foundation report as long as you're there. While he's preparing for that piece of it, I, I wanted to reinforce how great our legislators are in our areas. This morning, I got a text from Representative Levy. Here she is involved in busy, busy session and had the heart to send a text to me expressing condolences for my father passing. So make sure you reach out to our legislators. They're, they're very, very accommodating and easy to, to work with. So I just, I was super impressed and she's got a good heart. So, all right, Tim, if you'd like to move on to the foundation report.
Thank you, Chair Martin, again for the record. Tim Seidel, Vice President for University Advancement. And I have our Chair and Vice Chair of the EOU Foundation Board of Directors here as well. I'll let them introduce themselves and I think James is going to start it off for us.
My name is James Gorm. Go ahead and go through here.
Brent Gunderson.
As I said, my name's James Gorm. I'm the Chair now of the foundation and I am a 1995 alum of Eastern University, born and raised here in the Valley. Schooling and work took me away for about 12 years and then came back in 2007 and was involved with Tim in Rotary and he kind of pulled me into the, the foundation and I just really was impressed and valued the work he was doing here at Eastern and, and at that time when things were getting a little shaky, I just, I really wanted to get involved with, with Eastern here. So I became a trustee in 2017, joined the Board of Directors and have recently taken on that, that role of the Chair. I was fortunate enough, as I said, to go to school here. I did receive a scholarship and so it was very important for me to be able to give back. So that's kind of been my, my goal. My wife and I have a scholarship here at Eastern for the physical or the exercise science program and, and have enjoyed just really being a part of EOU. So for those of you, I'll just give a quick overview. The foundation was founded in 1964 with the mission to serve and support the students of EOU. The foundation is its own separate entity, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. The board is made up of donors who are alumni and non-alumni who are all strong supporters of EOU. Since its inception, the foundation has grown from just a few thousand dollars to its current state where we manage over $21 million in total assets with over 450 different funds, which has grown from over 300 that we've had in the past few years alone. Our campaigns really focused in the last few years on the foundation's strategic plan of engage, invest and enhance, where we are actively cultivating our regional relationships, expanding the engagement of alumni and further building scholarships available to all students to increase the equity access to higher education. In the past year, as Tim will go over in the dashboard review and highlight some of the significant accomplishments of the foundation with impressive growth of our state gifts and more robust and, a more robust investment portfolio that has contributed to the strength and the growth of the foundation. The fiscal impact we have had in the last few years, we have awarded over $800,000 in privately funded scholarships to EOU students and we are very excited for the day when we can proudly announce that this number crosses that 1 million mark. It's going to be a, a great day. As we continue into the future, the foundation continues its commitment to enhancing EOU's mission through strategic philanthropy. And we continue to expand our efforts in creative ways to grow alumni engagement, expand overall giving and develop plans for the comprehensive campaign to be launched in 2029. And, you know, I think that's my goal for this year especially is just to grow that engagement among the trustee, the alumni, and just bring everyone together and really realize what a great place EOU is and why we're all here and why we're involved. So at this time, Tim will walk us through the foundation's 2023 dashboard.
So the dashboard, sorry. So the dashboard will provide us with an overview of key metrics that the foundation board asks us to track. We developed this dashboard a couple of years ago with then-President Insco and our then-Chair Mark Pearson to facilitate, you know, this, these are the big picture items that we can share each, each February with the governing board. So that you can see of our funds, the 77% of them are focused around scholarships with other smaller breakdown in terms of other academics, academic and other support programs, athletics and buildings and equipment. Unrestricted and restricted funding is really the two major buckets that we track in terms of resources that come into the foundation. Restricted is any kind of gift that comes in with an earmark. So if you give us a hundred dollars and it's, you buy that rock from Chuck and it is for the staircase, that's a restricted gift. We have to use that for the staircase. We can't redesignate it and say, nope, we're going to actually send it over here and use it for the art department. It has to be for the staircase. So if you make a gift to a scholarship for the basketball team, it goes to the men's basketball team or women's basketball team, which you, which you direct. Nationally, we're seeing a much higher trend in people designated restricted gifts. Part of that's just changing the culture of philanthropy. People are becoming wiser about where their resources go and what they want to support. And so they're restricting their gifts to go to a specific item. We're seeing fewer funds being just given unrestricted, say, use this however you want. And you can see here where our total giving by year, this is one of the biggest picture items we, we focus in terms of how many resources are coming in. You can see a slight dip in, sorry, in 2019 and 20, kind of a steady trend there and an uptick in 2021. This is when we engaged in really some emergency fundraising focused on the pandemic, finding resources for students who otherwise were going to have to drop out. So we saw a major uptick, people really giving. After the pandemic persisted, people started thinking, well, I'm not sure what's going to happen here. I'm going to hold on to my resources. So we saw a decrease in funding and now we're rebounding from that in 2023. Estate gifts, these are major funds that come in usually after someone passes on to the university. We are meeting our goals here in terms of trying to get four estate gifts this last year. And we continue to, to look at how we can reach out to especially of our older alumni and donors to ensure they have all the information they need to make an estate change. These are resources that we were able to invest in, for example, the Field House and establish the Neely Center for Health and Human Performance. That was an estate gift that came where those individuals wanted to ensure we used it for education, particularly around physical education. And that was a wonderful investment for them to make naming opportunity as well as provide additional resources to help round out the completion of that new facility. We also track the gifts by alumni. We're looking at, we nationally track the number of gifts by degreed alumni. We also, at Eastern, we track the total number of gifts, but we want to always, always see that differential here. And we're seeing, you know, again, we saw a boost in 2021, a slight reduction in 2022 and not as much of it in this last, in this last year. So we're probing in to see why we're not seeing as many degreed alumni giving, what's that falloff here? But that's something that we continue to work on in terms of all of our, primarily our annual fund giving. We do multiple asks during the year to our alumni, including Giving Day, which happens in November, we do direct asks to via mails, mailings and emails for solicitations as well as in-person solicitations. We also track board giving, total overall board giving and look at where the foundation board are as compared to the Alumni Association Board and this, and this governing board. We'd love to get everybody to 100%. I think that's important to look at. Giving you should, really should be in how you feel is best you can give, whether that's a smaller gift or that's a larger gift or an estate plan or an ongoing gift. It's always important for us to, to look at that. If we can get to 100%, what that means is when we go to other foundations and we talk to folks at some of the other larger foundations, they want to see, is our board investing? Is the foundation board investing? Is the governing board investing? And we like to be able to show them that those numbers are high because then they feel like, okay, these people are investing in it. They believe in this, in what this university is doing and so we're going to invest in it as too. So proof of concept. Foundation net assets. This is the millions of dollars we have, the, this board manages. Brent's very involved in the, in the financial investment end of it and our finance committee and looks pretty, pretty hard at that on a regular basis. And you can see where we've had changes in the market. This is where we, we, we have a long-term investment plan that really looks at a 10-year running average. And we have some, so we have managers that work with us so we can, we can see where we need to make shifts. The board, I can tell you, looks at that very frequently and we're going to be visiting about it here in the next few weeks and look at the portfolio and, and even additional investment strategies. This is the foundation endowment, year-to-date investment return. So what we're seeing on returns, you can see in 2022, when the market shifted, we saw a dramatic decrease in our investment returns, but you also see it rebounding substantially in 2023. This is the part that always gives, I think, everybody a little angst. And if you sat in on, I think some of you have sat in our, our foundation board meetings before as well, and you'll see the markets shift. And we usually have a discussion that goes around, like, maybe we should take all the money out of the market and put it in the, you know, under a rock in the backyard and, or put it in gold or maybe something. Then we say, well, we need to have some flexibility there to be able to provide resources for scholarships. And then we look at the long-term investment returns and realize that our strategy is working pretty good and we might tweak it a little bit, a little bit there. And then we see where it comes back around. So it's almost like watching your 401K, right? You can go in and try to day manage it, but I'm not sure if that really is going to get you where you need to go. But if you look at it for the long haul, we've had really good, healthy returns on the investment strategies of the, of the foundation. And then scholarships awarded. This is what people always want to know. James mentioned it. This is the, the chart here, you can see really is the amounts awarded. So we may issue, we may, we may hand out over $800, award over $800,000, but do students pick it up? So we also go through a process where we do a rewarding. We work our financial aid office, try to update if this student says, yep, I've got your reward. Cedric says, yeah, I'm coming to Eastern. I'm, yep, I'm going to accept that reward. And then something happens in September and he just, you know, doesn't make it and doesn't come to Eastern. We try to re-award that scholarship to another student and hopefully they'll pick it up and make a decision to come to Eastern and it'll help support them. Sometimes we don't, we're not able to make that re-award in a timely manner or it doesn't affect that student either. Or we just run out of the criteria because most of our scholarships are, are connected to some specific criteria there for a specific program. But that overall number you can see is continuing to escalate up in terms of the numbers awarded. And then we're hitting, we're getting out students, about almost 350 students are receiving awards through the, through the foundation. And that is the, the end of the dashboard. This is something we actually look, look at over with the foundation board and they ask the same kind of questions and we look at how we're tracking those. So these are essentially our KPIs, our key performance indicators for the foundation. Did you want to add anything on Brent and investments or anything?
I don't have a lot to add other than, you know, we do outsource that. U.S. Bancor manages the assets. We do have a finance committee, which I'm on. We have an investment policy committee, which I'm on. We take this very serious. It's a lot of money to be stewards of. Obviously ups and downs in the market. 2022 is anomaly, but I, I feel like we're getting good service from our investment professionals and we're trying to have diversified portfolios and stick to the long-term vision. So other than that, just happy to continue to be able to provide over 300 students with, with assistance. So that's, that makes me proud to be part of this organization.
James, Brent, thank you so much for all that you guys do. And Tim. When it comes to the 800,000 or that amount, how do you arrive to that? Is it the interest? What, what, what drives that mark?
Yes, these are interest earnings off of the endowments for those scholarships. It also does include cash gifts that we receive as well. So we may in one year receive a number of cash gifts where the donor just says, just spend it out. Just, here's $10,000, get that out to as many students as, you know, 10 $1,000 scholarships. And so we'll go ahead and do that. But those, yeah, it's based on the investment returns. And this, this board did something a number of years ago that's fairly unique, is that they started setting up a one-year reserve on all of their scholarship funds. So we pay into that in years prior so that each year, we, each year, we already have the funds ready to award. So we're not, we're not waiting to see what the market looks like September 1st and before we can tell students how much money they have in their scholarships. We're, we already know how much we have. And we mitigate that. And sometimes the investment committee says, hey, things are getting tight here. We're maybe not going to take a draw this year or this term, this quarter. We're going to wait and reinvest those dollars and see if it comes back up before we have to, you know, we don't want to get into any of the corpuses of the, of the gifts or anything like that if, if we don't have to.
James, I think you said 2029, there was going to be a bigger driver, something. I know you said 2029.
Sure. And that's in accordance with the changes in the ascent 2029, the EOU strategic plan that one of those, this board approved was, this governing board approved was, we'd like you all to work on a fundraising plan. We, we already worked on one and determined at that time when we presented it, that maybe the last couple of years was not the time we wanted to invest heavily in it. Fundraising is a very time-intensive and very people-intensive. Right now, as you know, we have the fantastic Tyler Dubsky, but we have one gift officer. I get to spend some time on it and we're hiring a new executive director and that person will, will hopefully spend, you know, 60 to 70% of their time on it, on fundraising as well. So we'll have just less than two FTE focused on, on fundraising. We, to do a major campaign, we'll have to invest more resources to get that return of, of gifts that come in to support the foundation and the university.
Trustee Hoffman.
Thanks. I should probably know this and I probably did at one point, but I'm old and forgetful. The university's assets are managed by, at the state level? Where, how, not the foundations, but the, the university cash? And so is that in a state pool? Okay, okay. That makes sense. And then I think I heard.
Just for people online, Leanne said that we manage them, we.
We manage them, but they're, they're ours, but they're managed through the public university support fund.
Okay, thanks.
So they go into the pool and, and you mentioned that U.S. Bank is the manager for the foundation. Is that the U.S. Bank private client group or how, who, who at U.S. Bank manages the, the, the foundation's assets?
We do it through U.S. Bank Trust, which, out of Portland. A couple of individuals, individuals there and we've worked with them for quite a while. I know that like Adler and others have maybe worked out of the Boise office, but we've always worked out of the Portland office.
Well, we were with Penfield to, I don't know whether he's still in Portland or not.
Michael, yeah, I think he's still there. Yeah, we also worked with.
Again, not that it matters, but I just needed to.
Yeah. And we're very fortunate that our, our philanthropic advisor there, Bill Dolan and our, what's his title? Is it, basically our, our fund manager, Matt Raster, have been with us for quite a number of years. So they really, they're not, there's not a lot of turnover there. It's really great. So they, they've seen what we do year after year. They come out and visit with us regularly too.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's great. Thanks for, I just needed clarification.
I just might add on to that briefly is the one silver lining that we've seen with the rise in Fed funds rates over the last two years to kind of fight inflation is we've actually been able to get a rate of return on our short-term, short-term money. So we've done a couple of things internally with cash reserves, other short-term investments, where we've been able to do some things with online savings account earning 5% and, you know, short-term treasuries in the five and a half percent range. So that's been a nice boost to our operating activities as well.
Yeah, we're all scrambling.
We're, we're running a little short, so we'll get trustee Lair and trustee Cronin and then we'll move on to our next item. Yes, go ahead.
So being new to, new trustee, and I know the foundation in this is that value-add dollar, but obviously embedded into our overall financials, like strategic plan of sorts, especially with what students are able to access. So it's pretty critical. How do you measure the health of the foundation? So these numbers look impressive, but you know, when it comes to our budget, there's different indicators of where are we at in our reserves or the percent of different revenue pieces is, are there measurable places that we look to, to say, knowing it's a value-add dollar to begin with, to have a foundation backing? But are there measurements for having a healthy foundation in support of the university that we're kind of looking for, what our dollar amounts are there or the annual giving?
Absolutely. And that's part of the reason we created the dashboard. These are really all the key indicators we look at for, and to address that question of, is the foundation healthy? Is it doing what it is? We look from year-to-year giving, total assets and total assets of the institution, sorry, of the foundation. Those are the two key indicators. Are we seeing people give and are they want to support our mission and what we're doing is? as an institution? And then how are we managing those, those resources? My favorite one to look at is how many students are we impacting to? Right? If we can help those students make a decision to come to Eastern by providing this scholarship. Yeah, that's the best part I think we all like about this is that we know students who receive those scholarships because we, there's that process that they go through. They send letters to donors to say, thank you so much. Here's my story of why these scholarship funds are meaningful to me. That makes a difference. I know when folks like James and Brett look over our scholarship applications, they just want to give the money, I want to give more money to students.
And, and just as a helpful, on page 23 of that annual report there, because I think your question's very important. You know, we're going to look at the annual report tomorrow. And as we learned this morning, part of the board's role is to assess the strategic plan. And you can see the last two items on that page are, are part of, you know, the board's responsibility to, to, to maintain that. So I really appreciate wanting that, how?
Just a quick question. First of all, thank you, gentlemen, for the work that you're doing. The foundation is a critical piece of, of overall health of our university. Is there an opportunity or an invitation for employees to participate in the foundation? Is there a regular opportunity or invitation for them?
Absolutely. Most recently was with the November Giving Day, where we pushed a lot of information out via our email communication systems and on social media to encourage people to go online and give to support the annual fund for the foundation.
Go ahead, trustees.
One quick point. I just want to speak to our trustees that encourage everyone to donate. And I think we went over this a year or two ago, as far as one of the requirements for trustee. And we didn't talk about amounts at all. It's just the fact that we would like to see 100% of trustees be donors. And I didn't see that on the graph. So I just like to encourage everybody to be involved. And I don't think the amount makes any difference. I think the math shows that we're supporters. Thank you.
As a member of the finance committee, I would, I would just challenge our trustees. I see that the foundation has 80% participation, and we're at 60%. So I, I'm pretty sure we can get higher than that.
All right. Thank you so much. And that was really great information that I think we all needed to know and didn't know prior, previous to this. So thank you.
Yeah, I will point out, every year, the trustees sign their affirmation of the ethical duties of trusteeship. And that does include a statement that I recognize that I am encouraged to financially support the university at a level that is meaningful to me commensurate with my means. And in discussions we've had about that before, it's been, you know, if you're a student, maybe that's 20 bucks. If you're not a student, maybe it's a little more.
It still gets us to the 100%.
It still gets us to the 100%.
All right, our next item. Thank you for being so patient. Absolutely. Our next agenda item is our educator equity plan, our education equity plan. Rayatt Newman, our interim dean of the College of Education, will present this topic. So please go ahead.
Chair Martin, Board of Trustees, thank you so much for the opportunity this afternoon to share with you the College of Education Equity Grant. Oregon's Educator Equity Act declares that the state educator goal as the percentage of diverse educators employed by a school district or an education service district that should reflect the percentage of diverse students in the public schools of the state, or the percentage of diverse students in their district. And right now, our students do not meet or match the students that are going through our schools. So pursuant of ORS 342, Oregon's six public education schools and colleges are required on a biannual basis to prepare written plans that detail the recruitment, selection, retention, and graduation of diverse educators. Diverse educators is also defined, well, diverse is defined by the state. That is not a definition that we get to choose. So we are very, we are trying very hard to meet the definition, but at the same time, meet our needs and our regional goals and, and our goals for the College of Education. So in the spring of 2022, the College of Education shared our 2224 plan to the Board of Trustees. The last plan focused on three initiatives. The first one was an instructional assistant pathway, the development thereof of that pathway. Two, a mentor teacher summer workshop. And three, culture responsive practice faculty training opportunities. The College of Education at the winter and spring of last year reflected on all of these initiatives as we prepared for our new plan. From that, we made some minor changes based on some of the changes that we need to make in order for participation and whatnot. But one change that I really want to share with you before talking about our plan this year is our change from the culture responsive practices for our faculty. First of all, in the, in reflection of our previous plan, we realized the College of Education already has multiple opportunities for professional development related to culture responsive practices, including a social justice book club hosted specifically by the College of Education, EUU faculty and staff professional development, the community keynote, and the K-12 teacher workshop offered by the Center of Culture Responsive Practices, which is housed in the College of Education, PD offered by the Center for Learning and Assessment, CTLA, PD offered by the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging, DEIB Group, and individual conference sessions attended by EUU and College of Education faculty. So what we found out is through a reflection on all of that, we already have a lot of opportunities where our students are getting, or our faculty are getting professional development. We wanted to reuse these funds for something moving forward. So it was determined to shift our focus for this next plan. And with that, one of the things that we made is we included Dr. Angela Wassenkohl as part of our OPI, our co-principal investigators with Kristen and myself. Part of this grant work, we get $150,000 from the Educator Investment Council to complete all of our work. We are continuing forward with three initiatives for this year, one of them being the instructional assistant pathway. And I'm going to provide an update based on what we have already done. Future educators, which is replacing the PD for our College of Education faculty, and a mentor teacher training with an equity lens focus, which we did offer last year as well. Our instructional assistant pathway focuses on recruitment, retention, and graduation of individuals who are going through our education program, who are hired in school districts right now as instructional assistants. One of the barriers right now that school districts have is, first of all, we are have, not only our school districts, but it's a nationwide crisis, is that we are at a teacher shortage. When we are pulling and getting people interested in education, we're having to pull from those that are already in the profession, that have already shown an interest, because the lack of interest is an issue right now. So what we have done is we have pulled those instructional assistants and developed a pathway for them to maintain their positions as an instructional assistant, finish their degree, and step up as a K-12 teacher. These individuals go through our hybrid cohort. It is a two-year program. Starting their junior year, they take classes in the evening via Zoom with the College of Education faculty. They receive individually streamlined education plans. For those who come into the college with too many credits, meaning they have a lot of undergraduate credits, or maybe they're coming in from a different program, and they don't need all of the College of Education credits, because right now, our multiple subjects undergraduate degree also includes an ESOL endorsement. We have been provided the ability through TSPC to remove the ESOL requirement, and they only take the specific courses for the multiple measures or the multiple subjects degree. So we can take away those credits. This grant purchases textbooks. So that's another opportunity for those individuals to feel some reduced barriers as they go through the program. At the end of program, when they graduate, they receive a diverse classroom library. It is small, but it really does help those classroom teachers build something of their own as they start in their own classroom. One of the most important things of this pathway is the fact that those IAs, our instructional assistants, can continue in their position within the school districts without having to take time away from their job. This is huge right now, because a lot of our individuals, this is a barrier. Because when they rely on that money, they're not able to take time away from their jobs. This has allowed us, with TSPC's permission, to have those individuals maintain their positions while completing the student teaching experience. They complete student teaching with multiple mentor teachers based on the placements they are in. They teach five consecutive lessons in the four subject areas, math, social studies, science, and language arts. It's really opened up a lot of opportunities for instructional pathways and growth within the College of Education. Last year, we had our first graduate. This year, we have seven seniors going through as IAs, and we have 10 juniors in our program as IAs. Funds from our grant are used for travel, for recruitment, textbooks for our IAs, and the development of their equity library. Future educators is focused on recruitment. It's an additional effort to address our teacher shortage. It's our efforts to increase the recruitment of high school students into an education pathway and EUU. And it's our efforts to address the teacher shortage of our, of our region, and more specifically, our rural schools and districts. This is a pathway that isn't done with, in conjunction with OTP or separate from OTP. OTP is our Oregon teacher pathway, which focuses in on social justice matters for those who are going through the high school pathway. This is a very specific pathway for those districts who cannot afford to have a teacher teach the OTP course. Dr. Angela Wassenkohl right now teaches this course for us, which this allows us to do is get students interacting with the College of Education faculty, because who sells our programs better? The faculty within our programs. So our, those high school students are already interacting with that, that college professor, getting to know that person one-on-one. She's being invited to their basketball games. She's got four, four basketball players and one cheerleader. And, and she's trying to make her way out there, but she's already building these connections. And something we know that's so important in education is connections. And she has got that already. So we started this, this year, we have two options going on. We have a future educators course, and then we have a lab or a practicum. Within the future educators course, it is synchronous, taught by Dr. Angela Wassenkohl. It is one high school with five students. It is also being taught asynchronously through four high schools that has 12 students. These are all individuals who are interested in education, or possibly has said, you might be a good interest, you might be a good teacher. Let's see if you would like to do this by exploring this profession a little bit more. In addition, we are offering a practicum or a lab. Currently, right now, we have five asynchronous high schools participating in this, which is 15 students. So our grant will pay for Dr. Wassenkohl for the opportunity to continue teaching this course, travel to these districts to go watch the basketball games, and continue building these relationships, and purchasing of the curriculum that we are currently using to get students interested in the education field. Our last one is a mentor teacher training with an equity lens focus. This was chosen by the hack as EUU's focus goal for the next two years. Our first equity focused mentor teacher training was held March 4th of last year. We had teachers from LaGrande, Pendleton, Elgin, and Union, who participated in this Saturday morning training. We went from a summer training to a Saturday training because teachers need their summers. And then when we realized we needed to really focus in and give them some intense time in the subject, it really worked out that a Saturday was the best option for them. After the, after the training, we did some surveys of our teachers. And one of the questions we asked is, did we meet the goal of the workshop? And the two questions we asked were, did we facilitate conversations to discuss mentoring needs with a lens on equity? And did we share and listen to the needs and successes of our participants? And both of those questions, we had 100%, meaning our training was exactly what we said we were going to do and got our participants to the next step. Something that I really wanted to share, one of the comments from one of the participants is the following. I also learned how I could support teacher mentoring a student teacher. The resource you provided was great. It was not only good for student teachers, but looking through it, I could see lots of valuable tools for new staff. And this is exactly what we want to do, because one of the pieces we know is that when we hire these diverse individuals into our schools, they're also the first ones to leave our schools, because they are not feeling supported. So what we are showing here is this training did exactly what we wanted it to do. Some great things about this, the participants were paid for their time to participate in this PD on a Saturday, because teachers need to be paid for their additional time that they are putting in for this education that they are receiving. In addition, each teacher, each teacher who participated received $250 to develop their own toolkit that was purchased through this grant. So we had teachers who were PE teachers, we had language arts teachers, and we had math teachers. All those individuals got to choose specific tools that they could use in their specific classroom versus us building a generic toolkit for them. It was very specific to their needs. Our next PD is scheduled for May 4th from 8:12. And the funds from this grant pay for the additional work of faculty and staff to develop and host the workshop on this Saturday, pay teachers for their travel and their participation, purchase the materials for participants, and the opportunity for participants to purchase those toolkits. We are very excited to continue a lot of this work that we have already started, and a lot of those changes that we are already seeing, not only in our schools, but across our region. We are very excited for this opportunity. And I welcome any questions related to this project.
Thank you, Dean Newman, for the enthusiasm, for connecting and important work. The word on the street that I hear as I travel in many communities is, there's a lot of new things at EUU that really connects them to these pathways. And so a lot of excitement out there for what you and your department and all the colleagues have done. And also I need to say, this educator equity plan additionally prepared was very, very helpful to understand all the ins and outs of the plan. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a really quick comment. I was judging FBLA competitions, and it had nothing to do with this. But I did the interviews, and one of the future teachers came in, and just not even close. It was like 15 points ahead with the interview. So just kind of speaking to the things that are being taught in those programs, like she knocked it out of the park. She had the best cover letter. She had the best resume. I mean, and the way she held herself in that room, I about reached over the table and said, I'm sure I have a job right now today for you and my district. So just the quality. And you spoke a little bit to the OTP parallel. And I think opening up and not having some of those barriers, like that was really innovative. And from the K-12 lens, very appreciative that there's another option that we're not stymied by maybe not dedicating an FTE in order to offer that. So thank you.
And a lot of our very small rural districts, they're already, their teachers are already wearing multiple hats. I'd like to say one or two, but we still have one-room schoolhouses. So we really cannot dedicate a teacher to that. So they were not allowed opportunities to, to participate in some of these things. So allowing Dr. Angela Wassenkohl to teach this has really allowed us to reach districts and students we never would have had opportunity for before.
Ray, at every time I listen to you, you, you make me out of breath. So just listening. A couple of questions. On the instructional assistance program, is there, I understand there's textbook assistance. Is there tuition assistance as well? Is there any form of tuition assistance?
So unfortunately, the grant does not allow us to do scholarships.
So I'm just wondering, I thought that might be the case. And I'm just wondering if there might be the opportunity to do some strategic thinking on how we might be able to partner with some of our educational facilities, particularly those who think that they can attract individuals directly out of some of these programs, and, and maybe some scholarships. So just, just a thought, you know, if there's a way to help provide some tuition support, then, then I think that might be helpful. And the same thing for the future educator program. I think that, you know, if there's a way that we might be able to, to develop some, some tuition support, it would, it would help the university, it'd help the students. So, so I'd be interested in exploring that with some of our, our, our local foundations. And then the, the last thing is, thank you for the educator focus on, on equity lens. I'm not so sure that this board of directors might not benefit from some sort of continuing education on, on board actions through an equity, focused with an equity lens. Just something I'll, I'll throw out there. So.
Great. Thank you. I do want to mention that when a school district hosts a student teacher, they do actually receive a credit voucher. One of the things that we are really focusing in on the College of Education this year is reaching out to those districts when they have someone who's going through, not only as an IA, but all of our programs, and reminding them that they have these credit vouchers and that they could very easily and that they could very easily be used for the teacher candidates that are going through. Because one of the things we do here right now is, the financial piece is a hu, the largest barrier, and pretty much always the number one barrier why students are not going, finishing, and not coming through programs right now. So we do have that in place right now. Unfortunately, we don't have anything for the undergraduate or the high school pathway yet, but we do have some initiatives for those who are coming from the community college into our programs. We do have a financial piece that we're very excited to always offer if they're coming from that community college.
I believe we have a 60 to 100% gap in our giving as a board, so maybe there's an idea there. One thing that's a challenge from the K-12 lens is that we can only really do it in a reimbursement space. And for a lot of our staff, like Rayette has said, that's a challenge, because you have to have it upfront. So you've either got to go take out a credit card, you've got to figure out how you might find a loan. So a lot of times, we have reimbursement capacity, but not the upfront differential, and some of us have figured out different ways to go about that. But it is, it's challenged when it's a reimbursement.
I just wonder if there's an opportunity, you know, and I hate coming back to Adler all the time, but, but if this isn't something that would excite the Adler Committee, I don't know what would, so.
With the Ford rounding?
I'm willing to talk to whomever.
Yeah, exactly. I don't know why. I mean, I always need money.
Me too.
Just in case, though, as a reminder, with Oregon Teacher Pathway, which is high school, school districts are able to cover the funds for students that take any courses, which is what LaGrande does, I'm sure. And then the fee remission for the student if they enter is around 25%. So that's like a scholarship. There are things on that front. I'll just say this, you are wonderful, the work that you do is wonderful, how you prop up and support educators and then future educators. Our world is better because of programs like this. And I am always in that, like, we've got to have pathway programs for people to become teachers, because the world is, is off a little bit with the joy, the purpose, and passion of being an educator, or the joy, the purpose, and passion of being a student. And we've got to do things that maintain or sustain our future. And so these are the kinds of things that are just wonderful.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, we have time for one more.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to move to approve this EAC Educator Equity Plan for the next two academic years.
Trustee Schreiber moved, and trustee Hoffman seconded the, for the approval of the Educator Equity Plan for this coming year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's been moved and passed. Thank you very much, Dean Newman.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.
Okay, moving on, our next item, our representatives from our Faculty Senate, our University Council, and the ASEOU providing their shared governance reports. So, welcome to Auburn, and Rory, and Calvin. You guys can take it away and decide who goes first.
Thank you, Chair Martin, for allowing me to be here. For those of you who don't know, my name is Calvin Bennett. I am the Student Government President this year, and I have about five issues to go over in five minutes. I'm going to very briefly go over all of them and have some time for questions at the end. And then tomorrow, I believe some of my teammates in ASEOU will come in and give, I think we have about 30 minutes to talk about these issues that I'm going to go briefly over. So the first one I want to talk about for what we've been doing in ASEOU was our student trustee process. So the legislature in the long session last year passed a resolution saying that the student government had to nominate two individuals to be successors to trustee Schreiber for that student position. We nominated our two individuals for the senior position. We'll have, we nominate Isaac Insco, who is currently our Senate Chair, and then for the junior position, we nominated Anna Stanley, who is an online student. Both have been very involved in campus and other activities, and we are looking forward to hopefully the governor and the Senate confirming those nominations. Next thing was Lobby Day, which was an amazing experience. Just to give a brief overview, in the morning, we just had ASEOU, or we, I branded the ASEOU Lobby Day, we just had EOU students talking to legislators in the morning about students that EOU-ish, or students face, which I can follow up with more materials on what those issues are after this. I believe they're going to bring them tomorrow. But that was very cool. We had 34 students talking that morning from EOU to 30 legislators. They broke up into four teams, and we went throughout the Capitol, and we talked to 30 of them, which means we talked to about a third, because there's 90 of them total. So was very awesome, very successful. In the afternoon, we joined the six other public institutions to talk about the issues that face all of our public universities, and that was also awesome, to be able to work with our fellow students from the, essentially, I guess, the West Side institutions, Portland State, OSU Southern, those guys. That was awesome. I'd also like to thank trustee Schreiber and trustee Rio for showing up and also being some of the students that advocated. That was very nice, so thank you guys for that. And a big shout out to Tim Seidel. Oh, he disappeared. I don't know where he went. Oh, big shout to him and to Lori. Without them and their one-on-one support and help, and how much they cared about this, we would not have made it as successful as it was. So big thank you to you guys. Elections, our elections process is underway for next year. I'm sadly not running for reelection. I'm graduating. I know everyone's going to miss me. But, so elections for our president, and then for our eight senator positions, which it's our kind of unicameral legislative body of only eight, our, the application just closed, and elections will be, our campaigning starts next week, and then elections will have, or voting will happen, week 10 and 11 of this term, and results will be announced the Monday of spring break. So be looking forward to that. Some of the things we've been working on internally for ASEOU is operational efficiency. We've been seeing some budget cuts and money going to other places through our student fee committee, which they'll be talking about a lot more tomorrow as the plan. But essentially, for ASEOU, we decided to downsize a little bit labor-wise, because that was our main cost. We've been merging some positions together and doing that, so we have, we should be a little bit more sustainable for the future, so that's good. And then the last thing I wanted to comment about is not necessarily ASEOU, but more just campus and campus life. Being here for the last four years, it has been incredible to see how amazing campus vitality is this year. So just today, I went, like randomly participated in a stuff-a-Valentine event, where they, like, you stuff, like little stuffed animal bears. I just walked past there and saw that that was awesome. I went and voted in a chili contest, chili cook-off. There was nine people who made chili. It was in Zabel Hall, the College of Business Hall, I guess, and Education, where if Rayette's still here. There we go. Having my props. And that was awesome. I think there should be a video of me judging that somewhere. I had to, I guess, do an interview, ate some very spicy chili. But there's, there's just a lot going on this year, and I love it. It's the best year I've seen, and the jump from the previous years I've seen to now is phenomenal. I just wanted to share that with you guys, that as a student, that is truly how I feel. Awesome. So hopefully that wasn't too fast. Those are my five big issues, and I, I don't know, Chair Martin, I guess I'm open to questions, if that's all right?
I have a quick on everything you said. Love it. Just on the chili cook-off, how many kids or how many professors entered the chilies into that cook-off?
I actually do not know that number. It was not my event at all. I was going to class, and they're like Calvin, you have to try some chilies, and so I went. I think most of them were students, the Agripreneur Club hosted that, and I would reach out to them, or I can reach out to them for you and get that answer.
And it would just be, if there was a cook-off between the students and the professors, that would be nice.
I'm, I'm sure Professor Chad Mueller entered at least one. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
That was great. Rory or Auburn, who would like to go next?
All right, I'm Auburn Isaac. I'm the Chair of University Council this year. Just to give you a little background, I'm classified staff. I am Educational Program Assistant II for the College of Arts, Management, and Social Sciences, and I've been on University Council since 2021. So with that, you guys received a write-up for what University Council is doing this year. That was just a brief summary of our meetings and our priorities. One of our big priorities is the great colleges to work for, and I'm going to kind of go off of, I have some, some bad and good news, but it's, it's good based on what Calvin is saying. So what I want to focus on is just, we've had an increasing amount of people participate in the great colleges to work for, but the unfortunate part is we have not seen an increase in our results based on morale, communication, respect, trust, transparency, and compensation, there's compensation concerns and attracting and maintaining employees. And based on those results, previous results with previous administration, previous boards, we didn't really see action from the recommendations, the survey results, and them being addressed in a meaningful and impactful way. Now, the good, so I bring up that because I think it's important to understand where the results have come from previously, and to understand where campus is currently at as far as morale for employees and faculty on campus, to see where, where we are hoping to go, and with new support, what that can look like. So, so bringing that up, I just, I want to commend President Ryan on her active role that she has taken this year, on being, just digging in, wanting to do the work, coming up with solutions to overcome barriers and silos that have been previously created on campus. That's, that's interaction with University Council that we've never seen from previous president, and so I really appreciate the work that you're doing. I think that that just shows the care that you have for the people on campus, and that you're a people person, and understanding that success comes from the people that do the work. So thank you for that. And as you can see, students are feeling the work that she's doing, and obviously, it's, it's not done alone, so I appreciate all the people that have really stepped up. We have a lot of interims, and we're hiring more, more positions on campus. So I see that Bennett's feeling that. I'm feeling that as an employee, and so, which leads me to my next point. Next month, we are rolling out the 2024 Great Colleges to Work For Survey. So what I'm hoping that we can achieve this year, even if our results are not, still not where we want them to be, I am hopeful that we can get support from executive leadership, from the board, to achieve the results that we want, that only gets passed down to, you know, our employees, but our students see the success as well, and that only enhances everyone's experience. So like I said, we haven't, we haven't had the results we've wanted in the past. You know, we still have a long road ahead of us to increase morale and build back up the trust and transparency that's been lost over several years. But I'm hopeful with a new board, a lot, a lot of new faces that I haven't seen quite yet, and with new executive leadership coming on, I'm hopeful that we can do that and build that together, and not have these silos that we have created before, and build back that trust, because that's huge. So that's something I wanted to bring to the table. If you have any questions about the report I sent out, or if you have questions about great colleges to work for, you know, it's weird, I was talking with President Ryan, is she, she's seen that people want to be here. They work here, they stay a long time, but even though people stay, if they're not happy, that reflects down to our students. So even though we do have people that stay, you know, we are a great, great location, or a great place to work within Union County, but attitudes trickle down, right? And so that's what, even, even though we have people that stay a long time, I think that that's super important, to be motivated to do the extras and to volunteer their time when they're not being paid. That's huge. We get a lot of asks as employees to step up and, and help students and go the extra mile, but if, you know, if you're not feeling that motivation or support, that makes it really hard. So, so yeah, that's, that's the good, the bad, and the good. So I can take questions if anyone has any.
Thank you, Auburn. Are there questions for her? I have one. So what, what year are you using a barometer for? When you're saying to bring back trust and transparency, how, how long ago was that? Or do you have a year that you could say, we felt like it was there, and then it's, it disappeared?
Certainly.
Was there a plateau where you felt like you had reached?
Yeah, so in reference to the surveys, right, we did one in 2018, and we did one in 20, oh, 2020, 2022? You know, I've, I've only been with the university for five and a half years now, so I, I wasn't there the first time we took the survey. So there are some, some things that I'm unaware of, but I would say that there was a lot of trust lost with previous administration. So that's, that's the main point that is hit in the survey, so I can't tell you exactly what year, because I, I probably wasn't here when that was happening, but when I did read the results from the 2018 survey, that's when I started seeing, seeing some of the issues. So I can't give you a specific year, but ever since we have done the survey, that has been a conversation.
Thank you. So you're saying, like, previous to that, everybody was happy or felt some contentment?
Again, I wasn't here, so I can't really speak to that. As a student, though, I was a student that graduated in 2012. I will say that I didn't feel that as a student in 2012, but as someone who has been in connection with students before I worked here and has connections with students now, they feel, and, you know, they feel that the tensions and drop in morale. So I can't specifically say when it exactly happened, but I will say that those things are referenced in the survey. And if you'd like to read comments, that would be a, probably a conversation with HR, because we, there, there is a comment section, but it's very confidential, and we had subcommittees that had to go over special information and training to be able to read those. And that was part of the subcommittee report that we've done the past two years. So I'm, I'm not really at liberty to say specifics, but I'm sure that you'd, you'd be able to have access to those.
Thank you for being so transparent in your answer. I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's important.
Yeah. I was just curious where, where the barometer was, but thank you very much. Other questions? Okay, Rory, you are up.
Thanks, folks. My name's Rory Becker. I'm an archaeologist by trade, which means I dig holes real slow. I'm faculty in the, in the Cass College and this year's Faculty Senate President. Most pertinent to you folks in Faculty Senate is our endorsement of two applicants for the Faculty Board position for, starting next year, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say Anna. It will be missed, but well-earned in your retirement, we have endorsed Mike Heather and Margot Gigan, or Gigan, in the, in their application to the governor. Those have been passed forward. So. How's that? So Western Oregon has moved to not giving Fs or D minuses, it moves to a non-fee grade. So we've visited about, since they're on the other side of our state, what does that mean? What does that look like? And, you know, what, what sort of effects may that have? The literature that they put out discussed retention as motivation for that and its effects on financial aid, how students would interact with financial aid against that. It's on as an information, I'm more simply discussing it, and I think the, most of the discussion moved towards, well, that's interesting, let's see how it works. They're right over there, and we can keep an eye on it. But I wanted to mention that today to say that we're aware, and we're discussing it, and we'll see how it works out for them, I suppose. We have that opportunity to kind of assess, but we had a good discussion about it. The most, the biggest endeavor that we've taken on is the President's Memo of November 27th regarding looking at Gen Ed. So the Faculty Senate has taken on itself a ad hoc committee to investigate Gen Ed at EOU, the Gen Ed system. Our first round with the committee was comparing EOU's Gen Ed system to the region, other schools in the region, comparators in the region, both size, but just generally, what is everybody doing for Gen Ed, and how are we positioned? So that was our first round of reporting back on that, and we're now moving to, okay, internally, what is the Gen Ed system doing at EOU? Are there bottlenecks? Are there opportunities for improvement? Or in fact, are there places where it's working quite well? The, I've come to, to call this, sort of, when we talk about it, phase one. We want to gather information on Gen Ed. Where do we stand? What does it look like? What is EOU at as compared? What is EOU at as compared to other schools look near us and far away, but similar to us? Beyond that, what are some other systems that may be out there? And in, in exploring this Phase One portion through spring, we want to come back with that assessment and make some sort of decision about, is there a need for change? What are the strengths of the system we have? What are some potential improvements to it if those are needed? And how can we move that forward? So the majority of the work that Faculty Senate has taken on thus far and will continue through spring is related to looking at the Gen Ed system and how we're positioned, or positioning ourselves, our students, and in the region. So thanks. Any questions? I'd be glad to answer.
I, I have a question. Are, I know you're just starting, but do you have any hints of, of what you think is happening in the world of universities in terms of Gen Ads at this time?
Not really. I, I was as interested in this question as anyone. The first report back, and neither, whom either, there needs to be some normalizing of the data, look at is our Gen Ed system is 60 credits. The assumption was, well, a lot of them are 45 and aren't we a little high? That may still be true. The initial cut on those numbers looks like the average is around 53 credits. So maybe it's, the average is somewhere in the middle and we're a little closer than we thought, but I'd stress, we need to work on that data and that committee is continuing to do that work. But those are the questions we're trying to actually get some solid analysis on and put some reality behind that numbers.
I could share what I've seen in the literature, too, if you don't mind, Rory. You know, one of the things that we're seeing more in, in higher education is outcome-based general education. And so thinking about particular skill sets or, you know, identities, and in, when I'm talking about identities, in this case, I'm talking about like, where does the university sit? What does the region need from the university? How can a general education program be responsive to that region and the needs of that region? And so I'm really, I just want to say, I think Rory is a great partner and I think Faculty Senate's a great partner, and I'm excited about the work they're doing. And I think it's funny that you call it the November 27 memo. That seems fun to me. I don't know why, but thank you. And I, there's, I, I think it's going to be exciting and it's kind of cool to just, you know, as a former history professor, please understand, sitting and listening to them talk about curriculum is fun for me. So I, I liked, I like to sit in and listen.
Any other comments or questions?
I think mine, Rory, is, number one, I appreciate all that you do too, as a professor, but also as a, a citizen in LaGrande. Where, where are you guys in the thought process of a D minus or an F? I know I have opinions, but what, where, what are your initial thoughts or what are the initial, I'll just say, information you guys are collecting?
Just asking for a friend, right?
No, it's just. Yeah, to nobody in particular, George. No, this, I don't know. It was a discussion about sort of what is this system, right? It wasn't a discussion of how can we integrate with it. It's trying to understand, what did they do? And what, what do we think the effects of that are going to be? So the, the claims of retention are ones that may be 100% true. We just, we're not sure about that. So I would say personally, it's interesting. This is just me talking. As someone who flunked out my first year of college and needed that letter that said I had one term to turn it around, it'll be interesting. Not every student needs that. I didn't want it, and not every student needs it. And this changes that, that dynamic a little bit over there. So in fact, I think the discussion is pretty mechanical at this point, and I wouldn't make predictions about where that conversation might go because I just don't know. I, I think right now it'll be interesting to see how it goes for them over the next year and get a chance to start looking at some of their numbers or outcomes on that. But the way it integrates with financial aid is certainly interesting because that seems to be one that is part of that, big part of that discussion. If you get a chance, read the student response in the, the Western Howell, I believe it's called. The student, students talk about, does this degrade the quality of our degree to some degrees? And they had an interesting take on that. Again, I'm not saying you should believe that stance or not, but I'm saying it's an interesting opinion and it was from the student's side, so. I think you did a good job of not answering your question very well, but.
I think you were saying, stay tuned, right?
Stay tuned.
Thank you very much. Those were excellent reports, you guys. Thank you so much for sharing those with us. So we will.
It's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see.
No problem. I, I just have a question. Last year, Sarah Ralston was leading a first-year experience task force that was also looking at Gen Ed and particularly perhaps in developing some cross-disciplinary courses. Is that part of the conversation that you're having or have you heard anything about that? Where did that go?
I haven't, I haven't. I'll ask Sarah. I haven't heard where that went or what their outcomes were. But I'm not, was that more related to first-year experience or the, specifically the Gen Ads as a whole?
Yeah, well, I mean, in, it is an integral part, but it was more geared towards basically replacing like the uni courses. So I was, I, I was just curious whether any ideas about developing cross-disciplinary type of courses is part of that conversation about Gen Ed.
It certainly could be. And moving forward, the discussion isn't now about what would a change look like? It's gather some data and let's analyze that data and assess where we're at and if a change is needed, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you. Auburn, I'll be interested to see, I, I'd like to have further conversation with you on that, what you were talking about as far as the, the morale. I, I think that's important for us to.
100%, yeah. I think, you know, I can just go off what the data is and that's what the data is saying. And so that's part of what I enjoy about it is digging in because I'm a people person and trying to figure out how to make it better. So yeah, I would love to have more conversations and what we can do to up morale. Like I said, I think President Ryan's doing some great things on, doing vitality on campus and, and trying to increase morale. But yeah, I'd love to have further conversations, so.
Fill it further to it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Not a question, just a comment. I noticed this at the last meeting, that on the updates, the links don't go where they say they would, and it's, this time also, the, the links are, on the updates are, go to a different date, and it says minutes, it goes to an agenda, so it just needs to be updated.
Okay. Thank you for that. All right. The next item is an action item, I believe, if I can find my spot here. Yes. A statement on trustee recruitment. So Chris, Secretary Burford will proceed with that.
Thank you, Chair Martin. So this comes to the board on the recommendation from the Governance Committee. And this is yet another item that comes out of Senate Bill 273. And I'll just scroll down to the portion we're talking about here. Section 3 says, "The governing board of each public university shall formally adopt policies." Of course, here, our board's policies are called statements. That, and it's 10 and 11, memorialize the process for filling appointments to the governing board. And as part of that process, require that when a vacancy on the board is expected, that the, so this board, at a public meeting, will assess the needs of the board and identify the ideal characteristics of any person to be chosen to fill the vacancy. And that, that is a public process with opportunity for public comment. And prior to attempting to fill the position, we need to notify the governor of what are the ideal characteristics that we identified. That's the context for this action item. Now, yeah, so the committee has reviewed, so let me get to the right document here. I got this thing in the way. Go away. Here we go. So this is what the committee's reviewed in a couple drafts now. This is the second version that the committee is now recommending for adoption. It would be a new board statement. The next sequence is 13, and it's just called trustee recruitment. And it starts with an overview, sorry, let me make that larger, I apologize. It starts, it's only got three sections. The first one is sort of an overview of the major principles that are involved. And then the, and then it digs in on the concept of ideal board composition, and it basically identifies that in a couple of ways. One is an area in which there's hoped to be a consistency of values among trustees. And so it's, it's hoped that people on the board would share these kinds of values, skills, and experience. And then we also want diversity on the board. And so these are ideas of areas in which you might want a range of characteristics on the board. That's an attempt to get an arms around what is the universe in which we're talking when we're talking about ideal characteristics. Now, this is not new. I assure you that even though I was not here, I've talked to those who were in 2014 when the initial board appointments were made, and that was conversations between the, the interim president, Jay, Jay, whose name I can't think of, Kenton, and Tim Seidel and some others. You know, how do we identify people with a variety of backgrounds on the board? They talked about professional backgrounds, they talked about geographic variety. How do we get a mix on the board? Because keeping in mind, the board is not appointed as experts in higher education administration. You are sort of the visionaries, the keepers of the trust. And so you want a breadth of backgrounds, but also a, a depth of responsibility to fulfill that trust. And, and so, exactly, that's, that's basically what happened. It just didn't happen in a public meeting. So the last section here actually describes the process that we're planning to use if the board approves this. And so at least once a year, if not more often, the person in Tom Seidel's position and the person in my position would brief the Governance Committee about the current composition of the board and any positions that we anticipate becoming vacant. And then would engage in a conversation regarding the ideal characteristics that we might be seeking in people to fill that vacancy. Those recommendations, we then go to the Board of Trustees, which would also discuss them in a second public meeting, a board meeting. And in each of these, at each of these meetings, there's an opportunity for public comment. So you can see we're checking off boxes there in Section 11 because we're having public meeting, discussion, and opportunity for public comment. And then ideally, the goal is that the board at a public meeting says, okay, you know what? These are, we've got two, three positions and we think we want some of this and we want some of this, and let's go advertise for that when we're trying to recruit people to fill these positions. And then this is the third sec, subsection of section, third paragraph of section, subsection 11. I tell the governor's office that these are the things we've identified. And then it's not like we're operating in a void. The, at this institution, and I certainly support this practice, Tim Seidel, the VP for University Advancement, has been sort of the lead person on a recruitment, and he, he maintains a lot of contacts. He's got prospects. They represent a variety of backgrounds. And some folks are like, yeah, maybe someday, but I can't do it right now. Maybe it makes a difference if they come in and if we, he comes and he says, you know, we're actually looking for a person just like you this time. Maybe that makes a difference. Maybe it doesn't. But it means we have public guidelines publicly adopted that help then solve the problem of figuring out, okay, well, who exactly are we going for? Just the first person we can get because we got a, we got a deadline? That's the idea. It's mandated by SB 273, and as you know, I'm not a big fan of quite a few of the mandates in SB 273. But there is, other institutions have done this kind of thing. That's why it's in the bill. And so this is a, an attempt to do that ourselves. I will give you an example. Brad Stevens' position is going to come open. We're in, this is on June 30th at midnight, he stops being a trustee. He's been a great trustee. We've had him eight years. That's two complete terms. He's term limited. He has to wait before reapplying. We might come back for you, Brad, after a year or two. But, so, so what I would expect if the board adopts this today is that at Governance Committee in, in April, we'll start talking about, okay, what are we looking for, for that position? Well, what was Brad? Well, okay, Brad was had a, was a medical professional. Brad's from Willow County. These are two criteria, not the only criteria. Do we want to try to replicate that? Or this is just hypothetical? Oh, we've, we've never had a banker. Maybe we need a banker this time instead of a doctor. It's that kind of conversation, as far as I understand. And now, keep in mind, people are not beaten down the door for these jobs. And by being more specific, it also narrows the number of people who might actually be willing to say yes. So, but in fact, it's, the law's making us do it. So that would be the idea, the committee would come up. We have too many committee meetings in April, April 2nd and April 30th. So maybe it takes two meetings, but eventually we get a recommendation to make to the board in May. And if the board's ready to adopt that recommendation in May, then we start recruiting. And maybe we, like, six weeks, we've only got six weeks before the deadline for applications for people who would get, get to the Senate in September. You know, maybe we hit all those marks and then we get an, an approval in September and boom, in October, just like with Brenda this year, we get a new trustee. Maybe it takes longer, but that's how this would work. Questions?
So just trying to get my hands around it. So does the recommendations come from Tim and yourself or administration of the college? Or does it come from all the board members? Or I guess I'm trying to see how this process goes.
Yeah, I think the brainstorming would happen at Governance Committee, but then it would come to this board for action. I don't think it would be a consent agenda item, not, I think we want to have it open for discussion. So ultimately, as, as Cheryl was saying, all trustees would have a voice in this, this discussion.
3.1, 3.2, as you said, this writing.
Yes. I will, one point I didn't make is sometimes we get unexpected vacancies, people resign for one reason or another. So, you know, we're going to talk about anticipated openings at the, but, and we, we may, I'm not quite sure how we'll address the, the unexpected vacancies. Maybe we have a couple sets of ideal characteristics held in reserve.
I, I don't, did that answer your question, trustee George?
It did. And I, I'm just curious, curious whether it eliminates other people that we haven't considered that might be appointed to the Eastern Oregon University Board. You know, it's a much larger world than just us here in this room. And so that's kind of was driving my thoughts as I kind of think about the process.
You know, and, and that's a great point there. I, I don't see this as really, unless we allow it to limit us, I don't see where it's really changing a whole lot. I, I feel like if trustee Cronin came to us and said, and knowing there was a vacancy, I, I have a suggestion of somebody, that didn't limit us in the past. And so I don't see that, we've already been pretty much following this. I don't see it being a huge change for us. We've never said, sorry, you can't give us a recommendation. So I, I personally don't see this being a huge change from what we are typically doing. Yes, trustee?
Yeah, when I read the language that we have now on 3.2, the last sentence says, recommendation of the Governance Committee and any public comment. So it could very well be that we will receive public comments on names which up to this point was not part of the process. That is a big change. I mean, it's, it's a change.
Yeah, it's a change. I'll be flabbergasted if we get a whole lot of public. Yeah. Trustee Smith, did you?
Yeah, thank you. I, I feel like there's
I, I feel like there's a pretty big political component around this. I mean, being confirmed and, you know, giving your statement to the committee, Senate Committee and like, is that just a rubber stamp or, you know?
No, I don't think so.
I guess, like, we could put forward a name, but, right?
But yeah, ultimately, it will be the governor's appointment and then, and then obviously the Senate confirms.
Yeah.
But, you know, at this point.
That would happen anyways, I guess, right?
Yeah. Ultimately, it's the governor's appointment.
And the governor's office has frequently emphasized to us that they want multiple applicants for any vacancy because they want to be able to make the choice. So this is really sort of a funnel process. We do our scoping. We say, okay, we think we want this range of, of ideal characteristics. We try to get people, some are closer, some are not. And then they file applications and ultimately, it's the governor's office's size, they may ask for our, our ideas, but they'll decide.
Did that, is that kind of where you were going or would you like further?
Like, I get it that we're doing this for SB 273, but it feels like an exercise in futility, honestly. I mean, so.
Yeah, I can see where you would feel that way, but I think, I think actually, we, we do have a lot of input and I do appreciate the opportunity for the input, but I can sure see your point there, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Oh, thank you Chair Martin. Trustee George, if I can put a finer point on what I think I also heard you say was, how do we solicit input? So we're a group and we have the persons in our direct and indirect circles. I, for example, would love to see this board have greater representation from cohorts in Moro County, for example, that is close to being the first minority-majority county. How do we get the word out? Because we're not doing that here. So I, I think the Governance Committee humbly did a pretty good job with this, of course, with Chris's help, right? But this doesn't address that issue is, for example, my day job is, we knock on doors, we post public notices, we get the word out to recruit people and, and it's hard and it's a luxury at the same time, it's to communicate to people. So that's the piece I think this, this policy doesn't address and I'd like to see how we could improve that in the future.
One of the things I've been thinking as I've been listening to everybody, and I think maybe I read and participated in the discussions with something else in my mind, but one of the ways that I was thinking about it was a little bit probably like, like Gary was, was just mentioning, or trustee George, sorry, is that, you know, when we're doing this evaluation, I hope that what we're all thinking about is what's missing here and what can be added here, right? Not just what can be replaced, right? Like what can be added? And so for me, as I was kind of going through the list, that's what I was thinking. It's an assessment of, you know, where, where can there be growth? Where can there be someone who can help push me to do more and be better, right? Those kinds of thoughts were going through my mind.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but the joining of any public committee in the state of Oregon is an open application. It's open online. You can go, anybody in Oregon can go there tomorrow and put their names in, notwithstanding what we may recommend, that pipeline is totally open to the general public in any of the committees, including the public universities.
You are correct.
And of that, we have zero control and it goes directly to the governor's office.
Yeah, you're, you're exactly correct.
When, when I'm talking with folks, that probably the top ask is, well, who are you looking for on the board? What, what gaps do you see? Are you just looking for a bunch of educators to be on your board or what? This gives the board the opportunity to say, we've, we've actually discussed it and really the board's leaning, they'd like to look for folks in this area and this area and they're really on a, you know, specific, they'd like us to get somebody from, if we could, somebody from Moro County. And then we can pursue how we go about getting that information out or networking with the right people using this board also and your, all of your connections. I mean, I have a bunch, but if I add all you in, then we have a whole lot more, right? We all have this, these concentric circles that ripple outwards. So that gives us more opportunity to have a discussion about really who it is. And then if we do have questions from legislators or the governor's office about, you know, what does your board see as their priorities? It gives us that opportunity to just say, well, we've identified these areas that we want and we've made a strategic decision. We want to look, we're looking for representation in these areas and we'd love to have trustees that can help us do these things. And that gives more information to the recommended, more information to the governor's office, the governor's office, to the legislature and those folks who are going to be nominating folks for our board.
Thank you. Erin?
So if I may, one thing that I'm wondering about here is that what we're kind of discussing now is a bit in the weeds of a hypothetical implementation that we haven't yet played out. But I think the language here is usable enough that we could do a real intentional and almost like role play to a hyperbolic level on the first time that we walk through it to really speak to, what does this mean? How does it implement in action? And then through a case study that we have in front of us even this spring, how did that go? How did that play out? Because all of these things, as we know, because we've also had action items this year to reopen board statements as well already, if we find a hitch in our get along, so to speak, we always have the authority to reopen and say, this was something we learned that we'd like to fine tune that language. So I would almost make a motion to approve as currently created by that governance board, kind of with that caveat that we all understand, as with any of our policies, there's opportunities for revision if there's something that comes up. But, so I've, I'll put a motion on the table, of course, that gives us an opportunity to still discuss, but.
I'd like to second the motion.
Thank you. Trustee Lehrer moved and trustee Valerio seconded the motion to accept this with, with the intention of reviewing it and making sure it's something that works for this university and their trustee recruitment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. So, thank you. All this was really an informational meeting and I kind of thought it was going to be a little bit, we thought we'd have a lot of time on our hands, but it didn't work out that way. Yeah, yeah. So at 5:30 this evening is the President's Winter Reception held in Loso Lobby that everyone is invited to attend and then at 8:15 in the morning in, in Hoke, we will be hosting coffee with our students. So please, please show up at 8:15 so our students have a chance to visit with you.